All right, well, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are convening a school committee meeting. And first up on our agenda should be the consent agenda. And for everyone here, this meeting is being recorded. So could someone on the staff go over the consent agenda? Sorry, I'm driving right now.
Do you want someone just to read the agenda items, David?
Yes, please, for the on the consent agenda.
Okay. Let me pull, unless someone has it up.
I have it up, I can read it. Consent to past record, item one is past record of December 2nd, 2021 school committee meeting. Item two is an acceptance of gifts and grants. Item three is the Brookline High School Project Ganska Growth Guaranteed Maximum Price Change Order 18, PCCO 25. Item four, Brooklyn High School Project CTA Change Order, nine, number nine, change order. Item five is the Brookline High School Project NB Kenny Change Order Number Five. Item six is Driscoll School Project Gilbane Change Order Number Six. And lastly, item seven is the Driscoll School Project Jonathan Levy Architects Contract Amendment Number 18.
I'll move it.
All right, thank you, Helen. Is there a second?
Second, it's Mariah.
Thank you, Mariah. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Or would anyone like to discuss any of the individual items? All right, if not, let's go ahead and proceed to a vote. Helen?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
I also vote yes. And anyone else who I've missed? Is Suzanne on now? All right, so the consent agenda passes.
Wait, you forgot Susan.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apology, Susan. Susan, you're out on the consent agenda? Okay, yes, so it's unanimous for those present. All right, Mariah, could you mention what's next on the agenda?
It's the superintendent spotlight on excellence.
All right, so now it's the superintendent spotlight on excellence. Thank you, Mariah. Go ahead, Linus.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to share our screen here and take you through our updates as well as the spotlight on excellence.
Robin, could you just give me screen sharing access, please?
You should have that now, Erin.
All right, so this is our report for today, December 16th. We will walk through some of our school visits that we've had, share some items around community engagement, share some elements of our district themes in action, and then have our spotlight on excellence. So first up for our school visits, this is actually starting round or rotation three for me in terms of formalized visits to schools. At this point, we are looking deeply at principals' goals, the goals that they've written for themselves, as well as reviewing their school improvement goals and checking in on where they are in those processes, as well as visiting classrooms. So you can see those that I've recently completed with the building leaders, Beep, Baker, Driscoll, Heath, and Lawrence. And tomorrow I have Lincoln, followed by Pierce, as well as VHS. And the senior leadership team also met at Lawrence School on this past Tuesday. So again, making sure that we all get out and visit our school community. For our community engagement activities, Friday, December 3rd, I had the pleasure of joining many other Brookline school and district leaders at the 36th Annual Metco Directors Association Educators Conference. And this was held in person down in Norwood. The schedule of speakers was very informative, and the day was productive for all engaged. I was able to join several other Metco superintendents in the superintendent strand for both part of the morning as well as the afternoon. The Office of Registration and Enrollment hosted an informational meeting for incoming kindergarten families Thursday evening, December 9th over Zoom. I had the opportunity to join that call and listen in as our newest families learned about the registration process. This is typically the first point of contact for soon-to-be PSB families. And I would like to thank the Office of Registration and Enrollment Staff for making such a great first impression for our district, as well as Dr. Watts, who also joined as well. Saturday, December 11th, Congressman Jake Akin Klos hosted a town hall meeting for Brookline constituents in the Ridley School. The multipurpose room there, joining me at this meeting from the school committee were Chair Suzanne Fettersfield, Vice Chair David Pearlman, Helen Cholubsky, as well as Susan Wolf Ditkauf. There was a large crowd on hand to hear from the congressmen, as well as ask their questions. The PSB was happy to be able to offer the meeting space for such an important gathering. We actually received word this week from the PTO leaders at the former Remote Learning Academy that the commemorative bench they donated to the town has been installed at the One Thru Square Monot Rose Garden. The gift from the RLA families commemorates the vibrant remote school community they built during the height of the pandemic. The RLA community also raised money for nine rose bushes planted near the bench, representing all nine grades at the former remote school. And finally, I would like to thank the Ridley PTO and Pierce PTO for recently hosting me at their monthly meetings. I met in person at Ridley and their cafeteria on December 3rd. And the following week, on December 10th, I joined the Pierce community over Zoom. Both of these meetings were very well attended. I'm grateful for these opportunities to meet directly with parents and guardians and share the visions that we have for the district, while also hearing about what makes their school community special, and also what are the opportunities to improve upon them. For our elements of our themes, district theme in action for building relationships, Gillian Dymant, the education, the ETF at HEAT, led the school through five days of learning about inclusive teaching best practices. This included daily announcements, informative emails and messages to families to help the community learn more about the 504 process, when and how to sign an ICAP, autism, teaching tips, pro-social play and games, as well as much, much more. For creating a culture of care, the Driscoll team, and we'll hear from Driscoll again a little bit later, Driscoll School Vice, Vice Principals Michelle Bartley and Melissa Lyons organized a holiday room service signup cards for teachers, paraprofessionals, school staff, and even the construction workers on site to request special holiday snacks and drinks. With the assistance of the PTO, the items were delivered to each classroom December 9th. And then eliminating barriers, Rockwell School staff completed an equity learning team session and also added affinity groups focusing on supporting our BIPOC paraprofessionals. This professional development is linked to Rockwell School Improvement Plan, goal of integrating culturally proficient practices and equitable instruction strategies that encourage student agency into daily practice. Finally, we have our spotlight on excellence. This week, we shined the spotlight on excellence on an exciting new initiative at the Driscoll School, the new student newspaper, the Dragonian. The creation of the Dragonian has been a real community effort. In fact, it was seeded with funds raised from last year's eighth grade class. What a lasting tribute from the Driscoll School class of 2021. The Dragonian has already printed a very successful and professional first edition. And I was presented my copy when I went over and visited last week. And I believe our student reporters will be showing us some of what they have done tonight. I'm very pleased that Principal David Euclid and Ms. Borden, the teacher leader for this middle school club, and the school's sixth and seventh grade ELA teacher, and several Dragonian student reporters have joined us this evening. At this time, I will turn the microphone over to Principal Euclid. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Guillory, and thank you for inviting us to speak this evening. I'm very excited about our new endeavor, the Driscoll Dragonian. Again, as you'd mentioned, it was raised with money, those money raised by our eighth grade students last year is a gift to our students this year. And we're very excited that we're able to get this off the ground. This has also helped with one of our parent volunteers, Marina Baudelary, and with the leadership of Zoe Borden and one of our sixth grade ELA teachers. We were able to start this club this fall. We're very, very excited about this. Again, this is a great example of a community effort led by our student staff and parents to provide a meaningful after-school program for our middle school students. So I'm very proud of the work that's been done so far. And Ms. Borden has done a terrific job with our middle schoolers. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Borden to talk a little bit more about the Dragonian.
Wow, thank you so much. What a lovely introduction. The Driscoll Dragonian, like Mr. Euclid and Dr. Guillory have mentioned, were sort of this vision for our community raised by Marina Baudelary and facilitated by these funds raised by the class of 2021. And we're so grateful for sort of the success of the rollout of this initiative. The interest from the students has been overwhelming. We've had, you know, at times more than 40, 50 students from the Driscoll Middle School wanting to participate, and we've been able to solicit meaningful contributions from students across our school, which has really given it a wonderful community feel. We have one issue out already. The second one, you guys are getting a sneak peek of tonight because technically it will be widely distributed tomorrow. We're hoping to have about six issues this year. Takes us usually like a month to six weeks to roll them out. And I guess the only thing to say is that I've just been so overwhelmed and inspired and energized by the talents and capabilities of the students and, you know, the true reality that they can take on any project and any initiative. And they have made it more than I could have ever possibly imagined. And I feel so lucky to be able to play my role in facilitating it. So I will turn it over to them because they can tell you all about it.
Hi, I'm Ella Blaisler.
Hi, I'm Jada Chan. Ella and I are seventh graders who work for the Dragonian. We both have a love for writing and learning more about journalism.
Jada and I collaborated to create an article about how Driscoll students feel about the construction of our new school and COVID's effect on these past years.
We enjoyed speaking and interviewing fellow students about the topic and collecting their opinions. We also got to communicate their ideas with the rest of the school about this controversial subject.
We got the privilege to decide what kind of article we would like to write. For example, Jada and I wrote another piece on our favorite show, New Girl.
Being given this opportunity allowed us to express not just others, but also our own points of view.
Jada and I both know that Ms. Borden is an amazing, one-of-a-kind teacher, and this paper shows just that. So once again, thanks so much to Ms. Borden.
Hi, I'm Orson. I'm in seventh grade at the Driscoll School. In our newest article, my friends and I interviewed Alon Munzer, owner of the new Jewish jelly in Washington Square Mamas. It was really nice to talk to someone from the Brookline community instead of Jewish school.
Hi, I'm Liam Hartman, also from Driscoll. We had a great time interviewing Alon Munzer and got to learn about, a lot about Mama's history, what it's like and what it's like to own a restaurant in the Boston area. While we were at Mama's, we were also able to try some of their amazing food. My favorite item from their menu was their plain bagel with cream, plain cream cheese, which I suggest trying.
Hi, I'm Brendan. I'm also a seventh grader at Driscoll. I was really happy to have the root beer float at Mama's, and I've been craving it ever since. I just want to say that we are really blessed with the opportunity to do this, and I hope that we will continue to have the Driscoll Dragonian in future years.
Hi, I'm Michaela Chin, and I'm a new sixth grader at Driscoll. As a new student, it's been a true joy to be part of the Dragonian. I cover the column Keeping Up With the Elementary, where we ask elementary students the question we chose for the edition. Write down their answers because, well, they're cute. I enjoy doing this article because I get to work with kids not only in my class, but in other grades as well, and see their joy-filled faces when they're asked to be interviewed for the brand-new newspaper. As well as work with my good friends, I also find it fun to see the excited people when the newspaper comes out. I'm so grateful for the.
Hi. I'm Leora Wolf, and I'm a sixth grader at Driscoll School. I'm so thrilled to be a member of the brand-new newspaper at Driscoll Middle School. I have written about several topics, including a sports article covering the Driscoll volleyball team and two staff spotlights, one of which on our outstanding vice principal, Mrs. Lyons, and the other on our incredible seventh grade ELA teacher, Ms. Clayton. I'm super lucky to have practiced my interviewing and writing skills. It's been wonderful to share my work with other people than my peers and my language arts teacher, Ms. Borden, who is also the faculty advisor for the Dragonian. I got to go to the semifinals and finals game for the volleyball team, and they won, which was even more incredible. I was also lucky enough to interview two amazing teachers and share their perspective on teaching and learning at Driscoll. This new student newspaper is a true reflection of Driscoll students' creativity, knowledge, and motivation. Thank you and happy holidays.
Well, they're just, as you can tell, the most fabulous and wonderful crew of student journalists a teacher or a school could ask for. And we're all so, so proud of them, and we really appreciate you all giving us sort of the time to share our work with you and with the Brookline community at large. If you do have any questions about the paper, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. You can find me via my PSBMA. And thank you so much for having us.
Thank you very much for coming. This was an excellent presentation, very informative. It's exciting to see our middle school students engage in this project. Do any school committee members have some questions or comments?
I just want.
All right, go ahead, Valerie.
I just want to say, what a phenomenal job to all of the Driscoll journalists and to Ms. Borden. You have a fantastic teacher leader working with you all, and I can't wait for the next issue. So thank you all for being here and for all the, all the writing and journalistic research you're doing.
Anyone else have some questions or comments they'd like to share? Feel free to jump in.
Andy has his hand up, and then Steven. I'm sorry, Steven. I didn't. Go ahead, Andy, and then Steven.
Thanks, Susannah. My question is just if, if we're not a Driscoll family, how do we subscribe?
That's a fabulous question, and we don't per se have the logistics of that figured out yet. But I will send a follow-up email once we do a little more logistical thinking.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
Steven?
I had a similar question. First, wow, that was awesome. Also, the paper looked, looked really nice. So just congratulations on both your writing, your journalism, and your design skills. My question was, is there going to be an online version? And how often does it come out? And I apologize if I missed the answer to that latter question.
So it comes out ideally six times a year is the goal that we have for ourselves. It has been sort of so far taking us four to six weeks to take it from the brainstorming meeting to the fully formatted and published paper copy. We certainly do have ambitions to have an online newspaper. We are working on sort of a successful rollout of the print paper, and then, you know, hopefully, stay tuned for the online Driscoll student news, but one, one bridge at a time currently.
Thank you. Good luck.
Mariah?
I just wanted to say it's great as well, and I have a subscription to the Sagamore, which is the high school paper, and they deliver it to my house. And I love reading it. And so I would be thrilled also if you come up with a mechanism to subscribe. That'd be great. Thanks.
I was going to say, as you know, Ms. Borden, you know, this is getting them ready for the Sagamore. So I'm hoping some of these journalists will then continue that at the high school. You see now what it feels like to have a voice and let the world know what you're thinking and the interviews you're conducting, and the Sagamore could use you. That's the paper at the high school. So we look forward to hearing from, from the journalists for many years to come. I think, Dr. Guillory, did you give the certificate yet? I don't believe you've done that, have you?
I've not presented that as of yet, so here's what it looks like, Mrs. Borden. So this will be coming over to you all to display in your newspaper office. So this is coming your way sometime very soon.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much for being here. As we say, you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you certainly are welcome to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. And thank you so much for all that good work you're doing. And I think, as Steven said, the presentation also is just beautiful. It was very, looked like the real thing. It was a really professional job. So thank you so much for that. And have a good evening, everyone. We look forward to reading about your articles in the future. That's great. And now we're going to move on to the presentation of climate action petition by our high schoolers. So who is kicking that off? Do we know? Robin, do we know?
I believe it's Nita. I'm just moving everybody over right now.
Okay, great, great. We'll just wait a second. I see Nita's on. And Brian, and probably, oh, that's Nita. Alice? Nita? Brian? Waiting for Alice? Nita or no?
Everyone's there.
Everyone's there. Okay, go right ahead.
I can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
I can't hear Neta. I think her mouth is moving, but I can't hear her.
Oh, that's true.
Neta, we can't hear you. Oh, you're, are you on mute?
She wasn't on mute before, so I'm not, I'm not sure what's happening.
Okay, thank you, Alice.
No problem.
I think she's working on it.
Okay.
Hopefully.
I know the feeling.
While, while we're waiting for the audio to be figured out, can I ask a quick question about the superintendent's report? Sure. Okay. My question is, Linus, it's so great to see the continuing visits to schools, and I was wondering if there'd been any progress on possibly scheduling times for school committee to do school visits?
Thanks. Suzanne and I talked about that at Docit. So we'll be getting back to you all with more specifics about that.
Great, thanks.
Can you guys hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
All right. All right, okay. So this fall, the BHS Environmental Action and Food Justice Clubs ordered a petition for climate education and action in Brooklyn Public Schools. It reached, received over 660 signatures from BHS students, which is over a quarter of the school. The petition asks for school leaders to declare that climate change is an emergency, to take meaningful action by December 31st, and to form a committee that includes educators, students, and many other stakeholders who are charged with preparing a comprehensive set of recommendations and steps forward, including but not limited to curriculum revision by September 15th, 2022. So I'm going to read a speech, and then Alice will go, and then so will Brian. And then that is kind of our presentation. Okay. As a senior at BHS, when I envision the future, I see two possibilities. One, a dystopia in which the inhabitants are plagued by diseases, have limited access to fresh air and water, and are constantly subjected to the unforgiving weather conditions. In some places, this dystopia is already a reality. For many hours, I have worried about my quality of life, the quality of life for my future children, and even my parents. Too often, I sit at my desk, and rather than doing my calculus homework, I ponder whether I should even bring a child into the world when the fight to end climate change doesn't have an end in sight. I wonder if future generations will be able to make snowmen with their siblings in the backyard or see the leaves change color in the fall. I wonder what the point of doing my homework is if sea level rising could submerge the city I call home. Even as I plan for my future and go through the college admissions process, I wonder if there's a point to applying if there will be no world left by the time I graduate. But the important thing here is that this doesn't need to be our future. There is another possibility, one in which we take the necessary action to stop climate change. This is where you, the school committee, come in. It is our collective duty to ourselves and to those that come after us to do everything we can to stop this ever-growing crisis. As we see it, this petition will begin the process of bringing the schools up to date. Most importantly, we want to equip students with ways to act against climate change. There is no need to overhaul the curriculum to do this. For example, to integrate sustainability into student learning, we could create a unit on environmental racism for history classes, investigate mathematical models of climate change in math, and instruct students on how to use their voices to make global changes in English. The point of this petition is not to come out with a definite answer of how the school should implement these changes, but rather to create a committee of qualified individuals who can examine what we already do in our already is a plethora of scientists, legislators, and activists in Brooklyn to draw from. We want this committee to be community-based with experts, educators, and students involved. As students, we are impatient with the lack of action from the town. If you fail to adequately address the climate crisis and don't move forward with this petition, we will hold you accountable. This is not a time for complacency. We look forward to hearing from you and anticipate a response to our petition. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so I'm reading next. Hello, my name is Alice McGarvey Thompson, and I'm a junior at Brooklyn High School. The climate crisis is here. The reality of climate disaster has already begun, felt most by countries and communities of color. The time for debating and theorizing has passed. We are now at one of the most consequential moments in our history. It is our decision, will we protect the futures for our children or be complicit in the disaster that awaits them? Climate justice is racial justice. If Brooklyn is going to talk about its commitment to racial justice, then there must be full acknowledgement of environmental racism in action for climate justice. We cannot deny the inequalities between the way different Brooklyn students' lives are affected by the climate crisis. In the greater Boston area, we see disproportionately high asthma rates in COVID cases in communities of color due to environmental racism. That is the result of inaction. When unrelenting heat waves hit our communities, that is the result of inaction. When pollution leads disproportionate rates of asthma among students of color, that is a result of inaction. When a future of lethal environmental racism arrives, that is the result of inaction. Inaction is loud. It signifies to students that, that climate action and climate justice are not important. It leads to our collective idleness. If we claim that as a school district, we have no power fighting the climate crisis, we are making a mistake and endangering the future of our students. I envision a Brooklyn school system where climate justice is a top value and top priority. I envision elementary schoolers learning how to test their drinking water and protect themselves from natural disasters. I envision high schoolers being informed and equipped with skills to combat the climate crisis and protect our futures. I envision a just and livable future for all of us. We have brought you our experiences. We have brought you evidence for this urgency. It is now up to you to enact the change. Please hear our voices and know and do what you know is right. Our futures are in your hands. Thank you.
Right, so it's my turn. So my name is Brian Lee, and I'm a senior at Brooklyn High School. And thank you all so much for listening to us about this important issue. So my take on this is, when I think of climate change, I think about my hometown in Vietnam, where many people are suffering from flash floods, landslides, and civil rights, and cities are enveloped in extreme heat. I think of my grandparents and my relatives who live in a frontline country and are feeling the direct impact of climate change now. It is scary to think that these impacts will only worsen. Would like the school district to acknowledge that Brooklyn students come from all places. Would like the school district to acknowledge that Brooklyn students come from all places around the world, and many of which have been especially hit hard by climate change. And our education cannot ignore this phenomenon that is affecting all of us. From what I've heard from my peers, climate anxiety is not unusual among us. Climate change is a critical issue intersecting with both racism, sexism, and the efforts to address it must be both widespread and systematic. Universal climate education is of course needed in our schools. Students need to know not only the basic science of climate change, but also the ways they can contribute to reducing their waste impacts on the environment, but also be prepared to face a climate-disrupted future. Brooklyn is not doing anywhere enough to address these deadly effects that climate change is bringing and will bring to people everywhere around the world. And from what I see at Brooklyn High School is that most of these teaching efforts come from lone educators. And the reality is there's no little leadership that are supporting these efforts. Students and teachers need the guidance from administrators to integrate sustainability, environmental concerns, and resilience into our daily culture. We have put forth this petition in hopes that climate problems, including disruption disruption to the food system, economic challenges, health problems, and extreme weather will become something that is known in our school system but not daunted by. More than 600 students in our school have signed it as we hope that environmental conscience will be included in our practices, in a collective effort, and with leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a really important topic certainly to us and to our community and to our students, as you say. I'm going to open this up just to comment to school committee members in case there are questions or comments they want to make. And then we will go from there. Mariah.
Um, I'm wondering if we can have a possibly in the very near future, a more extended session to sort of think through and respond to this. There's a lot of demands in the petition, and it would be great to talk through those ideas and other ideas. Is that, I mean, it's a great petition. I want to thank you all for bringing it forward. And and I feel like it deserves its own sort of reflection and time to talk about it maybe more in detail.
Yes, we would certainly love to find a time. And I think that would be a great first step with including both school leaders and students in conversation.
So you know what I'm also thinking is it is it is more complex than just make something happen. So I think of different buckets in terms of environmental and and food justice. You know, one is curriculum. You talked about that. So we have a subcommittee on curriculum. Also, we have a capital, which is talking about our buildings and sustainability in our buildings and our new building projects. So that's also another big bucket. And then we have a policy subcommittee that talks about, you know, what what do we want to talk about as a committee that's a policy going forward? And I know that David is the chair there. And they're talking about, you know, things like pesticides on our lawns and fields and natural grass turf and, you know, these these issues. So there's a lot of big issues that are bubbling around, but I'm not sure that we have a systematic approach at this point. But I I do think, oh, I'm hoping Stephen is going to, he's raising his hand because he really wants to be the sustainability person on the school committee. So Stephen, go ahead and jump in.
Yeah, I I am. I agree with what you're saying, Suzanne. And I really like what Brian said at the end, that there's a lot of discreet activities, but they're not coordinated. And there's no like mandate under which all of these activities contribute to some overall goal. So I I know I've brought this up before, and maybe I I'm the newbie. So I still am not totally sure what the avenues to create change are. But it's when I was working with the farm-to-school group, we were working on a mission and a vision for that group with Sasha and Food Services. And I did some research on what school districts have environmental sustainability in their mission and their values and their goals. And they were really surprisingly few. I found that Tacoma had a pretty good one in Washington. But I only found like, I found a very small number of them. And it just seems to me that Brookline has an opportunity to be an innovator here, to be at the vanguard of thinking about how to coordinate environmental sustainability activities by thinking through how we could incorporate it into our vision, our mission, and our goals, which doesn't include sustainability at all. So I'm offering this as a comment right now, and I totally support Mariah's idea that we talk this through further, possibly towards the idea of forming some group with BHS to review our mission, goals, and policies and or mission, vision, and goals to see how we can really integrate this. So there's some force behind sustainability activities. Thanks. Suzanne, I'm looking at you this entire time, looking to see what your reaction to this is.
What about this idea of forming? Oh, you know, I think it would be great. I would love to see us. I mean, I'm a little reluctant to do an additional subcommittee at this point. But I know, Stephen, that you're like, if you wore that hat, I'm just saying if, you know, and you're a member of curriculum and you're a member of, what else are you a member of?
Of finance.
Finance. Okay, well, that's part of it. But, you know, if we could think about how we bring that to policy and capital. So I don't know, maybe maybe it does take another subcommittee. But I do think it's something that we we should definitely have a focus on. So I'm shaking my head yes. What I'm what I'm shaking my head no on is I don't think we're going to have it done by December 31st, unfortunately. We we just don't move that fast during the holiday time and vacation time. So I I'm going to ask you to give us a little more time. And we need to do a little bit of work here and then, you know, figure out how best to move forward to make it to make it, you know, I mean, we can make a statement. That's one way. But we also really want to integrate it into our subcommittees. And I'm not sure how best to do that, but I'm open to suggestions from others as well. Other comments? Questions? Yeah, Helen.
So thank you for your petition and your hard work. We are doing things on Capitol in terms of all of our new buildings and looking at sustainability. And there also, I'm not sure if you're even aware, the town has a director of sustainability who is looking at many of these things also. And I think it would be a good idea for you guys to touch base with him and at least see where where there may be some synergies between what you're doing and what he's doing. Or at least to find out what the town is planning. So, and you're welcome to come to Capital Subcommittee or any of the school building committee meetings. They're all open meetings.
They are.
And thank you again.
Yeah, so I so this is going to feel a little unresolved, I'm afraid. I hope I hope that's okay. I mean, we have heard you. I agree, it's really important. There are nine of us. We have to figure out a little bit how best to be supportive and how best to move forward. And so I think, as Mariah said, we'd like more time to delve into this and have conversations with you and maybe with others that would also be interested. So it would probably be, yeah, Brian.
About the December 31st deadline. So we initially made this petition in the fall, which is a little bit a few months ago. And it took some times to get all the signatures in. So like, we also think that December 31st would probably be a little bit of a rush. So like, we can probably delay this deadline to give it more flexibility for a few weeks. But do you guys like know that? How how should this change from December 31st to?
Yeah, I'm not sure, Brian, others. I mean, it'll probably take us a couple of months, but maybe maybe a month to have another meeting and then maybe another month to figure out, you know, what those recommendations might be. I would guess that we.
A thought, we don't want to, you know, look at, this is a problem that's been going on for a long time. And we certainly don't want to rush to do something without thinking it through. And we are going to be doing a strategic plan. And it may make more sense to to have this be, and it'll push out the time a little further, but it would be a buy-in from everybody, you know. So I think we, you know, maybe offline, you can talk to the students and figure out what makes the most sense.
Okay, Alice and then Jennifer.
Totally, yeah. So something I've been hearing a lot is that, you know, there's a lot of work going on in different committees. And, you know, I think that's all really great. And also, another thing I've been hearing is that, you know, like, like, you know, this is going to take a while. It's takes it's going to take a whole lot of me. And I think that's all so valid, like, and I think, like, you know, like, this is our future. And like, we really are running out of time. And I think the big reason we want this committee is because if we can sort of, it doesn't have to be the school committee doing everything. If the school committee can designate, you know, like a committee of, that was our, that's what our position is for, of students, of like teachers, of, you know, maybe some people in the school committee. But like, to actually do this, then it doesn't have to be the school committee, like, doing this action. It can be a subcommittee of, it doesn't have to be, but like, like, and I know we don't want to make a new subcommittee, but this is so, you know, this is so important, so important to us, so important to students. And I feel like, you know, we really do want to see like, concrete action behind this. And I know, like, it's very difficult with all the stuff going on, like, and that's why we can use a subcommittee. And I think that's really what we're asking, like, just to clarify, it's like, we want a subcommittee to, and then the subcommittee can work on this stuff. So I just want to like, clarify some of that.
Right. And when I say subcommittee, Alice, I was really talking about another subcommittee of just school committee members.
Right, okay. I'm the committee of, I think, sorry, that's a miscommunication. I think we mean like of students, of faculty, of, you know.
Yeah, and and perhaps we have somebody that visits or is a part of that. That that might be good. Jennifer, did you want to say something?
I just wanted to thank, thank all of the students for for coming and bringing this to us. It's an incredibly important topic, very timely and and urgent. And I just wanted to sort of look at it from the curriculum lens, thinking about the December 31st. I chaired the curriculum subcommittee. And we are, Docket is full for the December meeting already. So I don't, I think that we won't be able to meet before the December 31st deadline to talk about that. We do have a meeting scheduled, and we will be actually having a presentation from the science curriculum coordinator as part of that. But that that presentation was not designed necessarily to address this issue. So, you know, it will take some time. I like the idea of maybe like a working group or some sort of, you know, committee to address this and and, you know, sort of determine how we can make the best use of resources to make the most impact, to make the greatest impact. So I don't know. I don't know exactly what that looks like or how that would coordinate with school committee and decision-making. So it would also be great to hear from the district on, you know, how they see this integrating between school committee and the district and students and educators. That would be helpful, too. But I think that will take some time.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Jennifer. So I'm thinking maybe that, you know, the superintendent and I, and maybe David Proman, who's our vice chair, and maybe Stephen, if he's willing, because I know you're interested in this. We maybe we can have a conversation to think about, you know, how to move this forward, both with the the high school groups and then also we're integrating as we can the school committee and the district at the at the district level. So I hope that sounds reasonable. I think that's how we'll move forward. But thank you very much for presenting and for your passion. I think your your passion is right on and needs to be there. And hopefully you'll keep us honest and accountable enough. That's all good. You are welcome to stay as long as you want on this meeting, but you're also welcome to leave and enjoy your evening. We go on for quite some time tonight. So thank you so much again. And we have all your contact information, so we can, we'll figure all that out. We'll we'll get, and then you have ours as well. So you, you know, when you're getting antsy and we're not moving, you can contact us if that feels that way. Okay?
Suzanne, it looks like Leslie Ryan Miller has her hand up.
Oh, Leslie. Leslie, where are you?
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Yeah.
I just wanted to say really quickly, one, thanks to the student representatives. But then also, we've been working with Roger Grandy at the high school. I mean, we actually have a forum that's going to be taking place with Dr. Guillory in late January. So I would love to have this student group participating. We're going to have some parents there. We're going to be talking about the Farm-to-School Initiative and a number of initiatives that are already taking place. And then there will be a time for discussion where we start to talk about next steps. So if I could get the contact information for the student reps that are here, I'll make sure to get an invitation out to them.
Yeah, Robin, do you have that? You have their information, right?
I do, and I will share that with Leslie.
Okay, thank you very much, Robin. Okay, thank you very much, Leslie, for that. So thank you to our high school representatives. Thank you for your good work. And as I said, your passion. And we will be in touch. We, it sounds like there's several options that we can go. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you.
We are now going to public comment, and we have one speaker. Amy Newell, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Amy, go right ahead. I can hear you. Go right ahead.
Okay, yes. First of all, I would beg your forbearance. I did write the statement to only take two minutes, but I'm completely exhausted. And so I'm moving a little bit more slowly than I would like. So I'm Amy Newell. I've lived in Brookline since 1998. My older child graduated BHS in June, and my younger one started ninth grade there this fall. As I said, I'm completely exhausted, and I might not be totally up on all the most recent developments of the labor dispute between the Brookline Educators Union and the school committee. But I'm here tonight anyways, because as exhausted as I am, I can't begin to imagine the level of exhaustion our educators are feeling. Earlier today, I had an IEP meeting about my ninth grader, who, like so many kids now, is struggling with catastrophic levels of depression and anxiety. There were six or seven BHS staff members on that call, all of whom had clearly given a lot of thought to how best to help my struggling child, even though they are currently working to rule so as to get a new contract in place. I'm sure the school committee has plenty of reasons they feel they can't meet the union's demands. I'm sure it's hard to find the money, but it shouldn't be. The money is here in the community. I hear other parents complaining that work to rule harms their children, that our educators are being selfish. My child also has powerful needs, but I do not believe that our educators should have to grind themselves into dust to serve them. Our educators were already tired and demoralized before the pandemic. And for the past two years, we have been collectively enduring an ongoing disaster with profound impact on all of us, the educators and their families included. If we want them to continue to help us through this disaster, we need to help them. If we don't, I fear this whole system will break into pieces. Our educators are also people who have their own needs, and we must hang together with them in solidarity. I ask all of you on the school committee to resume open negotiations with the union to get a contract in place. And if money is the issue, well, then we, as a town, need to figure out how to fund it. Our educators are telling us what they need to keep showing up for us. It's long past time that we show up for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy, and you are our one speaker tonight. We will have an update later in the meeting, just a brief update on negotiations. So if you are available and you can listen to it, that would be fine. We welcome you to do that. Okay. We are moving on to some of the current issues, and our first is an update on the ARPA funds. And I believe Melissa's going to help us, and Mariah and Sam. There's Melissa.
Good evening.
Are you kicking it off, Melissa?
I think so. I didn't bring a presentation with me. I thought this would be better as a conversation with the committee. We do have an ARPA website where, you know, it's basically the repository for all the information on ARPA. So we have kind of the general sense of the rules of the of the program. The the money Brookline is eligible for, what we've received to date. I can put a link to that in the chat so that people can kind of take a look at it. And then if there are questions from there, we can, we can kind of talk about that. I know revenue replacement is is definitely a hot topic. Oh, you don't use the chat here, so I don't, I'm not sure quite how to share a link with you. Um, oh, you don't use the chat here, so I don't, I'm not sure quite how to share a link with you.
Are you talking about the links that, um, I, we shared those yesterday during finance out, if it's the links to the presentations?
No, it's a link to the story, the story on American Rescue. Um, but I could just talk to you.
I can email it in our email group if that's helpful.
Okay. Um, so essentially we are in the process of, um, where we're almost at the end of, uh, BCF's community engagement process. And so, um, they've solicited a lot of feedback from the community on the needs. Uh, we are expecting that there'll be a report sometime in January. Um, you're you're should also be familiar with, um, the forecast presentation. I think I had heard that that was discussed at least at the finance subcommittee, uh, the other night. And, um, you know, one of the things after the forecast presentation that we talked about is needing to convene the town school partnerships, because I think, you know, given the pressure on the schools, uh, and knowing that they're, you know, part of what ARPA is supposed to be for is to, you know, um, the provision of government services and to make sure that there's, you know, continuation of government services. Um, there needs to be a conversation about, you know, what level of revenue replacement the town, uh, is interested in using. It is the broadest category. So, um, I think, you know, that's that's part of um, what needs to be discussed. But then there are also categories within ARPA that are education related. And so, um, you know, the services to disproportionately impacted communities have a number of subcategories underneath them that, um, are education related. So education assistance for early learning, education assistant aid, aid to high poverty districts, education assistant academic services, education assistance, social, emotional and mental health services. Uh, and then there's a another category just called other. And and so, you know, it's about tying some of the support that you're looking for um, to responding to the pandemic. Uh, so, you know, outside of revenue replacement, I think there are other opportunities for the school department to, uh, potentially get funding. Um, we do have a portal that we launched, um, over the summer, uh, that essentially is the how we're going to be receiving project specific requests. Um, revenue replacement is is kind of a category outside of that. I think, um, you know, spelling out the all of the, you know, reductions in services, you know, as project specific would be a little bit too onerous. Um, but if there's a project that, um, you know, responds to any of the categories within the guidance, um, you should definitely, you know, look to enter it into the portal. So that that's essentially kind of where we're at right now. Um, we'll we'll have the town school partnership. I think Devon's trying to schedule a meeting in the beginning of January. Um, and then that kind of is timed well with the BCF and their presentation to the board on the work that they've done so far. Uh, and then at some point we'll be, um, you know, looking to try and at make a recommendation on allocation of funds. Um, and I think a lot of the, um, the submissions, you know, they're going to be happening on a rolling basis. And, um, you know, we're going to continue to kind of, you know, examine the process, talk to the board about, you know, what they think in terms of how they see the process unfolding as well. Um, so, you know, given that we've never done this kind of thing before, we are still kind of in the, you know, experimental phase right now. Um, but I think that that, you know, the budget process is well, um, serving us because there are there are natural points where we're having these conversations with departments on their budgets. And then at the same time, talking about what are the funding sources that could be used and ARPA is one of them. Um, so, uh, I think the school department is not late to the party. Um, there's still plenty of opportunity to, you know, engage with the board, um, discuss your needs, uh, and then, you know, make the request that you need, uh, support with this funding as well.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. But let's, Mariah, Sam, do you want to add at all at this point?
I mean, and and I would defer to Mariah as as well. I mean, what Melissa has said is accurate. What I would say for those who weren't at the uh, finance subcommittee nor at the select board, and we'll start with the select board, Melissa did present our budget request operating in capital both in the context of the entire town. And with respect to the entire town, uh, for the operating budget, uh, there was a a gap of eight point two million dollars all in, all the requests in town and school and undistributed and all the resources, uh, not including ARPA or revenue, uh, replacement. Uh, that number right now has been pegged at six point one million dollars. And so, uh, assuming all of that, the full measure of that was tapped to fill the gap, uh, the gap would would fall from eight point two million to to two point one. And I think that's what Melissa's alluding to with, uh, future conversations with the town school partnership. Uh, whether to look at that number, if that number potentially goes higher, uh, which we don't know yet. Uh, with respect to capital, which was discussed after, uh, through the committee, we put a bunch of requests through, uh, which, again, our assumption was it would be considered both for uh, CIP, which was presented Monday night, and for ARP or ARPA, uh, you know, potentially, uh, if CIP didn't have the, uh, capacity, uh, to fund those requests. As it turned out, for what the school committee specifically asked for, all that CIP had the capacity to fund, uh, was twenty five thousand dollars district wide for classroom furniture. Uh, it did fund all the leases for classroom capacity of a million eight twenty seven. It funded fifty thousand for many CIP, and it funded three hundred and forty thousand for, uh, upgrading the public, uh, announcement systems uh, for health and safety of of Brookline High School. Any other request, and there were a lot, uh, the CIP did not have the capacity uh, to fund those. Uh, an example of that, uh, would be the, uh, facility master plan, uh, revision, which was asked for for two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the response, and Melissa can correct me, when I mentioned that was our our second highest priority behind uh, the public announcement system, uh, just so we could get direction for for the future of our buildings. Melissa said that that would be a good, a good use of the ARPA funds. And, you know, that that might very well be funded that way, but there was no commitment nor could she give one and no specific timeline, because again, nor nor do I think she could give one. Uh, I guess that's what I would have to, and then again, this was revisited, but I just mentioned, uh, with the finance subcommittee last night.
I would just add to that, that, you know, there is an infrastructure bill that we don't have the details on yet either, and that potentially could be another funding source as well. Uh, Mariah.
The only other thing I would add to all of this is that as we think about, um, uh, well, as as was mentioned, we have the, uh, the CIP request that was doing double duty as an ARP capital request. And if any operating, um, budget request that we might think about just ensuring, I think, to the greatest extent possible, that, um, that any programs we're developing are are not going to necessarily be relying on ARP funds for a recurring program. And so thinking about how we can be ensuring our sustainability on that front to the greatest extent possible.
I agree. I think I I think that, um, you know, one of the things that we're really, uh, worried about is building recurring costs into ARPA and then having four years from now to deal with a really giant hole. So, um, and I I think, you know, but but understanding that there's definitely, um, some needs that are out there that this these funds were intended to address.
That's right. And so, you know, what extent maybe are things not one offs, but are they short term needs and how can we accommodate those? Um, and I think, uh, and Linus and Sam and I have talked about this, I think only briefly, though, just the opportunity for staff to be talking, to be thinking about some of, some of those, um, bounded projects that could be proposed within this program that might be, um, operating rather than capital. But one time operating.
Yeah, Helen.
Sorry, um, so Melissa, I'm wondering if on the revenue replacement, what is that sum now? Has it changed?
So we've measured it for calendar year twenty and at at the close of twenty one, we'll measure it again. Um, at the end of calendar year twenty, it was around six million dollars. And then we'll look at twenty one and, uh, and see where we are. I think that, given that we've brought in a lot of, um, debt exclusion, uh, rep revenue essentially in twenty one. Um, I'm not anticipating that we're going to see a a a large revenue replacement number. Um, I know that the town of Arlington, when they measured calendar year twenty, they didn't get a revenue replacement number because they had debt exclusions that were also kind of raising, raising the number um, for them. So, uh, I think we'll see, we'll see where we are in twenty one and and hopefully it's a little bit more. Um, then and then we can talk about, you know, how we're how we're going to allocate those funds.
So remember, we had spoken about some fairly large sized numbers of school department. Um, revenue losses, uh, from both early childhood, which I think was up around seven hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken, and also from the Brookline Adult Education, another two hundred thousand. Has that been incorporated into the six, uh? Well, it hasn't been added in.
So adult ed was included in what in my estimate for revenue, um, revenue loss. Um, in terms of, uh, the BEAP program, I think I did, I'm not aware, and I wasn't aware of whether or not BEAP receives federal funding.
Oh, yeah, they get, um, IDEA monies.
Right. So I'm not allowed to count that in the calculation. So I would have needed some, I think, at the at the time I was reporting it, I didn't have anyone to ask the question of, you know, how can I strip out the federal funds and then report that as a as a number? Um, so I would need that from Sam. Uh, and I don't, I I would think that, you know, we'd be able to revise it, but I don't know, um, you know, how that would work with with Treasury.
About this this summer, I'm sorry that you didn't have somebody to get back to, but I think it's an important number. It was a huge loss uh, that we subsidized, uh, in our budget, um, and you know, because we kept the program going, uh, but the the program lost money in it. So I would hope that you and Sam might be able to to work on that to, I mean, seven hundred thousand is is a lot of money.
Yeah, we just need to strip out the federal, um, the federal.
It's not that much federal. It's just the special education, some special education part, not a lot.
So I I kind of have a basic question and that is when we submit, I'm calling them an application. I don't know what it is, but ways to spend money. Um, the school committee will not be doing that, right? It'll be the school district. I mean, we don't, we wouldn't, we might make suggestions to Dr. Guillory, you know, programs or or other one time costs that we would like to submit, but I don't think the school committee itself will actually submit. Is that true or not?
I mean, I I think it's it's up to the school department to determine what the appropriate process is for how, you know, how projects are going to be submitted. Um, you know, we, our department heads, you know, we didn't have department heads run it by the board and then submit it. They just, you know, submitted their project requests. Um, and I I I think it's really up to you on how you how you want to navigate that.
I guess you're right. If I could offer, and I guess, and and not to call anybody out, but I I am aware that some of our own programs, I think, have are looking or have submitted uh, requests, even though they're under the umbrella of PSB. So I guess a question to you, Melissa, is should we pay? Should it, I mean, I think we don't want that piecemeal necessarily, but how 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 is does Mellon Company want to see that packaged for, you know, where again, I think we have, you know, we have a multitude of programs that have a multitude of needs that uh, may be eligible for ARPA funding, but yet, you know, I think probably, you know, at least Linus should be aware. I don't know if he is necessarily of all the requests or whether, you know, once you get something, if you know it's PSB, you know, does that information flow back uh, to somebody like Linus?
So, um, we can definitely make sure that he's aware. I we have, um, a workflow built into the Open Gov system where if I get a request from the member of the public that impacts a department, I can actually forward it to the department. Um, so we can make sure that that's set up for the school department, um, to make sure that you're you're seeing everything that might impact you. Um, and then in terms of, you know, submissions, I think, you know, the way that the reporting is, um, designed by Treasury is it's all very project specific. Uh, so I don't think you'd want, you know, a slew of individual programs kind of combined into one. Uh, I think it does need to be project based, uh, except I think the revenue replacement would be the exception.
Yeah, hmm. Well, have we, just committee members feel that we have had input as to what possible projects we would, we would be interested in or we might recommend or we might move forward? I mean, what I, Dr. Guillory, help me out here. How, where are we in this process in terms of what you need from the school committee?
Well, I think the, um, in terms of what we've been, some of us have been talking about as individuals. I think the question is, as a committee, are there collective things that you, uh, would like to put forth that would like to see? And so, uh, taking time to have that conversation, certainly we as a senior team um, are in conversations about some of the things that we are thinking about on large scale. But it's also the having the conversation around those things that are one time versus those things that become uh, part of our our foundation budget. And so it's it's drawing that line uh, in the sand, but I think it would be helpful, um, for the committee to have that conversation if there are collective things that you're thinking about. Um, and 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 what would with the process be? So do you want, um, uh, submitting that, you know, so I think it's it's teasing some of those those pieces of that process out.
I see Mariah and then Susan. Mariah?
Um, I just lost my, oh, I'm definitely interested in in my personal, my personal thing is thinking about what the staff is going to come up with and thinking about how we can provide feedback or or support that. And I know that I've heard of plenty of things like, um, uh, Leslie's, um, planning for, um, curriculum review and sort of culturally responsive materials and and, you know, to what extent could something like that, things that that have already been discussed, be plugged into this kind of thing, which are operational but are essentially one time. And then the other thing is that, um, at capital and at finance, we talked about this enormous backlog of deferred maintenance and and I feel like we have, we really need to make sure that we're addressing that. This is a pretty unique opportunity, in my opinion, to take a big bite out of that over a couple of years. And I think it's the right thing to do. So, you know, I I am interested in the operating things and hearing what the staff have to say about what they think.
Thank you. Susan?
So, um, no, thank you for this and thank you, Melissa. It's it's very helpful. I think, you know, one thing that always goes back and forth in my mind is that sometimes just for ease of use, we will use words like the school becoming, you know, being a department of the town. Um, or, you know, being a department head, um, although legally that's not quite how it works. Um, so I appreciate that that can cause a little bit of confusion. I guess sort of stepping way back, I, this past summer, I know we talked about as a as a district, um, school committee slash superintendent, you know, once we kind of got our feet underneath us, we got school back open, Linus and his team had a chance to settle in, that it would be that it would be important to kind of look at the criteria and prioritize what we think are really important strategic goals of the district and figure out which of those fit the criteria kind of in, and in what ways. And put together, you know, sort of a set of things so that it's no, it doesn't have to be a long document, but kind of a consolidated set of ideas that further our strategic objectives, but also meet the criteria. And the one part that I find a little bit confusing and well, first, one part that I find clear is that kind of what Melissa said, which is at the end of the day, these things do have to get sort of chunked out into, you know, projects that again, fit criteria and get approved. But it does feel to me like there's a little bit of a strategic step in the middle whereby the school committee slash superintendent, I do think I, I, for these purposes, it's one entity, the leader, the, the PSB needs to kind of pull together what we think are the most important things that meet the criteria. And that we, that sort of overlap with what we want to fund. And then if people want to also submit, you know, projects individually through the process, that's great. And that's, that, that's fine. That's great. But I also think that it's important for us as a district leadership teams, or the people on this call, but more broadly, to have a perspective on what we think are the highest priority places so that we don't end up accidentally funding something that's much, much lower, or putting something forward for funding. Collectively, I mean, as a town, that is lower priority than something else. That's actually much higher priority. It's, it's not like all these things are equal. So I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out sort of process wise, where to locate that. I mean, it could be a very extensive exercise, but it could be a fairly, you know, streamlined exercise, but some way that we aren't just asking for kind of a rag bag of programs, but there's sort of a coherence to, to what we're, what we need, what we've been talking about, what the criteria are, and what we think is a package that will really be transformative for what we need. So let, let me stop there, but I, I'm trying to reconcile this with prior conversations.
And I think that's where the budget process will be helpful as well, because I think that the, you, you, you have these opportunities naturally to review departmental requests, district requests and kind of having them and also having kind of an ARPA lens would help with those, because I think that Treasury throughout the guidance was saying that, you know, make it easy on yourself. Do it, do these things at the same time as your budget process. And then if there are, you know, in your budget document references to these things, it, it kind of just further helps, helps solidify, especially when they're looking for, you know, an understanding of how, how this is interacting with your budget as well.
Yeah. So to my mind, it's not, you know, the school committee or the superintendent, it's not the district or random programs kind of going through a website, like it, it needs to be coherent. And I'm not sure where the best place is to drive that, but it feels like this group of people with, again, with, with others, needs to kind of have our arms around it. So I don't know if that makes sense to anyone else, but yeah.
Can I make a comment, Suzanne?
Sure. Then David. Yep. Go ahead, Mariah.
Um, two things, I, I guess I, I still think, you know, and again, maybe I'm wrong, but I still think that as we continue to outline sort of responsibilities of the school committee and responsibilities of the staff, that to me, it, this falls in the staff camp to design something rather than have school committee take the lead on it. Essentially, this isn't, this is about the programming. And also I feel like I would not want to have subprograms of PSB quote unquote go rogue. I'm quoting myself there, but I'm not sure what the value is of have, if, if the superintendent has essentially put forward a slate of endorsed programs that he, that accomplished what he thinks and his senior leadership thinks is a compelling vision. I'm not sure why we would want to have other programming come in that doesn't fit within that structure. So I would want to make sure that all of these programmings that are coming in as a request, you know, fit within the vision that you, Linus, and your team have for the, your senior leadership team have for the district. At least in some fashion, to Susan's point, right? That it's a comprehensive package of programs that all that, that do what we want and sort of ensure that our resources, whatever the monies that we get are all part of this intentional transformative program.
Thank you, Mariah. David?
Just in further, and so Susan, when you, when you talk about process and coherence, are you referring more to the school committee and PSB leadership jointly developing a methodology of approach in terms of identifying a pecking order of sorts, priorities of what it is we'd like to submit for? Are you also talking about the raw mechanics of how we actually apply and who does the applying? Combination of both?
I mean, a combination of both, but I guess I was sort of on the, the strategic question. I want to sort of be, be really clear that I didn't mean it to be sort of a top down exercise, meaning the nine school committee members and the superintendent and his senior leadership team and principals decide on a set of things without sort of, kind of top down. I think it seems to me that the, the notion of the priorities and the, kind of the containers, if you will, of the, of the direction we're trying to go in, does need some coherence to it. I don't know if that means that, in fact, I think it doesn't mean that, it's not to the exclusion of people who are running different programs or budget managers or whomever, identifying things or other, you know, constituencies within the PSB, parents or teachers or whomever identifying ideas. This isn't a top down sort of exercise in, in that sense, but I do think that there's a, a pulling together and a coherence function. And there may be things that people are interested in that are just completely in the wrong direction. My guess is that most of them will be pretty interesting and, and, you know, deserve getting discussed. So I guess to my mind, in the first instance, it's a strategic question of, of coherence. And then I think operationally, I do think that at least having that bird's eye view, that it not kind of be coming to Linus one off when a, if a PSB program, I'm not even sure how that works. Like a PSB program applies through the website and then Melissand's, it's a line. It's like, that feels weird to me. It does feel like there needs to be, again, just that, that coherence, which doesn't mean every idea comes from Linus. That's, that's just to be clear.
I guess this might be an opportunity for people to just brainstorm for five minutes on, you know, the things that they have, they're thinking about to give that information to Linus. And then I would expect Linus that working with the senior leadership team, you would take that in to your consideration and you will probably get back to us looking for more input or explain, you know, figuring out how you, you're setting up your priorities. I, I don't, I don't think that it's our place to set up the priorities, but I, but I think we can make suggestions or certainly list kind of where our interests are, what we, our ideas, and we might have some really good ideas. Val?
I guess I would like to devote more than five minutes to it. And I, it sounds like based on what Melissa and others have said, that perhaps parents and educators and other stakeholders and caregivers have put forward proposals that nobody at PSB has seen yet, but may be really great ideas. Or maybe overlapping with something that they're thinking about and may well be pulled together to be a, you know, a stronger proposal. So from my perspective, I think we should devote a decent portion of a meeting or a subcommittee meeting to really pulling all of those out of the portal. Having Linus and his team provide us with an update and just give feedback like, like we do in the normal course of, of, of our duties and other areas. You know, these are really critical one time funds and, and they're strategic questions that I think we collaboratively really should look at to make them, you know, the best possible proposals we can. And again, pull ideas perhaps from people we don't know who have submitted things that are education related.
Right. You know, I wasn't suggesting like you do it all in five minutes, actually about what I was thinking as kind of a list of what has already been suggested to put that on the list and then have a conversation. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I just think that, that based on Melissa said, there are some that we don't know about, right? I mean, there are some that, that Linus's team are putting together and then there are some that are out there.
Right. Right. And as you said, there could be some that we, you know, we haven't seen that other people have thought about. Andy?
Yeah, thanks, Suzanne. I would back up Val in, in wanting to devote a large chunk of a meeting to, to this. And I wouldn't, I don't think I would want to have a, a really big discussion without having first seen the results of this community engagement process that Melissa said would be reported out in January.
So you're suggesting we would wait until after that report comes out?
So Melissa, how, how certain it is, is it that we'll hear, that, that we'll get a report in January? If it drags on much beyond that, then of course it will be a problem for, for our deliberating.
I think BCF is close to done with the focus groups and, and I think January is still realistic.
Okay.
Do you know, Melissa, what kind of participation on the school side was in the focus groups? I mean, I.
I'm not sure. I, I think I went, I went to just the, the first one. And so I think that was more about some social services and things like that. And in terms of submissions, I haven't seen anything school related yet come through. But we, you know, we did have an example of, you know, a, a project that got submitted that has since been withdrawn, but essentially was going to change the whole direction of the planning department if it was funded. So, you know, without the planning director kind of being engaged on that, it would be very hard to, you know, say, oh yeah, that sounds great, you know?
So, yeah. David, your hand is up. Is that from before or is that now?
That's now. So I do want to add that I really like what Val said and what Andy was also supporting with respect to a more robust community engagement process. Given that what the, what's taking place on the town side may not have a particular focus on the schools, we probably ought to develop a very specific process whereby parents, guardians, other stakeholders in the school community can offer what some of their proposals was important to them, so that then we as school committee members and PSB leadership can be made aware of those priorities that'll help inform us in our discussions.
Jennifer?
I was just wondering and listening to, to folks, and this may be somewhat repetitive at this point, but is it, is there some mechanism like a public hearing that might be beneficial to us to hear from community members about their priorities on the school side?
At, at some point, the select board will be having a public hearing around, you know, the projects that have come in. So I would have, you know, it could be something that, you know, school committee has, has a presence there. Or you could do your own. I mean, it's, I think it's still, you know, it's, it's an evolving process at this point.
I think it'd just be helpful to, to, to hear ideas from, from the community as well on their interests and then hearing from staff, you know, it's, it just, it's helpful to be able to react to some things. And I think that the more voices we hear, the more good ideas we're going to generate.
Yeah, thank you. Helen and then Mariah?
Maybe you said this, Melissa, but I'm not sure I heard it. What is the timeline for all of this? When, when will things, you know, get to the select board? When will they discuss it? When do you plan to distribute money?
So a firm timeline hasn't really been kind of solidified yet. I think that we're envisioning that a lot of the decision-making will be happening at the same time we're doing budgets. So, you know, January town school partnership, then we are going to have a financial plan that comes out with a certain level of assumption around revenue replacement. You know, will we be ready to have it in the financial plan or will we need to have it before town meeting? And, you know, this is more than a year grant. So, you know, other issues might emerge as we're, you know, you know, going forward. And new needs might be identified that then, you know, we're going to want to fund at the same time, you know, the state is now, you know, they've kind of gotten a plan out there for how they're spending some of their money. And so we want to look at that and make sure that we're not duplicating effort. You know, so that, that's important as well. So I would just say that, you know, the, the budget milestones that happen in the convening of the bodies is a great opportunity to make sure that you're still talking about this. So, you know, if you're advisory committee, I'm sure they're going to be asking you about this when we have our budget hearings with advisory committee. I'm meeting with the capital subcommittee in January. You know, we'll be talking about this and we'll be talking about the CIP. So I don't think there'll be a lack of, of opportunity to, to keep the conversation going. Making sure that we're all kind of aware.
I'm not asking how long the, you know, the process will be, but what's the end date? When do you think monies would be available for these projects that are determined would are?
I think, yeah, I think once we hear from BCF on the, on the engagement and the needs that have been articulated, then we'll have a sense of, you know, what the magnitude is for some of the projects that could be funding those priorities and, and then, and then we'd go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. Mariah?
I just wanted to note that we did have a hearing on the use of S or three funds that would also be informative as to some of the community desires.
When was that, Mariah? Do you remember?
That was November 14th, I think.
Oh, okay. Just recently.
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Val?
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that I think that it's important for some subgroup of of school committee and leadership, look at what's coming through more broadly. You know, what I used to call the, and still call the social determinants of learning, things that we may not be putting forward ourselves, but may want to endorse or support because of the impact the student experience. So I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar as well as, as all of these proposals are being reviewed.
Can you say more about that, Val? I'm not sure. I, I understand.
I mean, things related to food, healthy food access and, you know, internet and things that, that impact perhaps students of color disproportionately, things like, things of that nature that may come from a, a different entity other than PSB, but may certainly have a significant impact on a student experience or an educational experience more broadly.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Guillory, what are you thinking about at this point? Should, should you and me and David try to figure out what might have, want a public hearing for this? When we want to put it on the docket to spend more time? I don't know what your timeframe is to get any input.
So we can, we can check, definitely check in on it a little bit more, think about process. I was intrigued with the matching of the, thinking through the budgeting process, because once January gets here, the first two months of that is going to be hot and heavy. And working through that, the initial parts of that process. But then thinking about how can we go through the, the input that's out there, I think would be a reasonable way. So we can have some more conversations about it and then come back to the committee with some ideas there.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, I know you don't really have a timeline. What, do you have a sense of when the first monies will be awarded?
So the only money that's been awarded so far is the contract with BCF for the community engagement. So that will, after the, after they present their, their report, I think then the board would likely outline a, a timeline for, you know, how they're going to air projects and, and then decision making.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. We just want to, I just feel like we want to be prepared with that, when we find out about that. We don't want to, we don't want to just start our side of it at that point. No, if it's, if it's going to be.
I will make sure that Sam is aware as we're, as we're moving forward. So don't worry about that.
Thank you very much. Val and Helen, you both have your hands up. Are you still speaking or no?
I, I need to say one, ask another question.
Sure, Helen.
So the, the monies that the, are available for possible funding for these projects.
So we have our funding, which is $32 million. And then we have $11 million from Norfolk County.
And but my understanding, at least from, and And, but my understanding, at least from, and maybe it's changed from the town school partnership, is that there's only certain monies that can be used for these sorts of projects. There's a certain amount that can be used for these projects that the BCF is putting out for, or is that not true?
So there's, there's four categories. So the first one is the negative impact for, of COVID, to respond to the health emergency, premium pay, then revenue replacement, and then water and sewer and broadband. So those are the four. And so within the four, the revenue replacement is a fixed number because it's measured over four different points in time. And so the other, the other categories are not as restrictive in terms of a fixed number, but revenue replacement is broader in terms of eligibility. So it has to be for the provision of government services. As opposed to, you know, negative impact, you have to actually, you know, explicitly tie it to COVID and say, you know, how this is meeting something that happened because of the pandemic.
And so like the seven hundred thousand that I was talking about earlier, that would be under revenue replacement, correct?
Correct.
That we would be eligible to get.
For the provision of government services, yes.
Okay, so that's really important to get in there and to amend that. Sam, I hope you and Melissa will have a good conversation about that.
We will follow up, you know, in the cycle, which is going to be soon, given twenty-one ends in a few weeks.
Right. Thank you.
Susan?
Just on that note, Sam, I'm wondering if it's worth, you know, asking Masbo, if, you know, any of your peers have thought through the kinds of strategic investments that are important to their districts and how they are getting them to, like, which ones are kind of, are able to be worked through this process and which ones, you know, may, may not. Because it just seems like more heads thinking on this might be, might be better. So maybe that's something we can talk about in, next year when we come back. If there are other people who have good ideas on this.
Depending, I mean, the community I came from, they're, well, they're Norfolk County as well. But I mean, for example, Brookline's getting on its own thirty-two million. And I think Dedham's getting in magnitude to two and a half million. So I think it depends largely, you know, which, you know, so working with communities, and there are communities certainly in the state that have gotten quite a lot of money on the, on the ARPA side, you know, through the city or town. And, and you're right, I'm sure those same conversations are occurring currently, you know, about revenue replacement versus capital. And so I, and I'm on the PD committee for the, for the state organization as co-chair. So certainly I do have an opportunity to, to convene something sooner than later and we'll let you know what, what transpires.
That, that would be great. So I'm sure there's going to be a lot of, you know, masks and, you know, the, the usual suspects. But it's to whatever extent people can think through their strategic priorities and somehow get them to work with the system, you know, work with this, that would be of most interest, at least to me, maybe to others. Or creative ideas they're getting from their communities of educators or families that we should also be thinking about. So thank you for that.
Oh, Helen, one more.
I'm sorry. I'm going to ask another question. So Norfolk County, have they determined what they're giving the money for? That eleven million?
So they are giving it to the communities based on the formula, but they're, they actually have their own portal that we're going to have to enter project requests into. So they are not giving the money to us.
We know we're getting eleven million. We still have to tell them?
We still have to submit projects and have them approve it and then have them transmit the money.
Does that go through the board first and then to them?
I think that's how we would probably, you know, whatever, I think the board would ultimately, you know, approve the submission to the portal of project request.
Okay, okay.
And their criteria are the same as the Feds?
Yep. It's all the same.
Okay, I think that's it for tonight. Melissa, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
No problem.
And we will certainly be in touch, Sam and Linus and all of us. Mariah, all the finance people will be working on this. And we'll, we'll come back to this idea of having maybe a public hearing and get an input from the public and what might be the best way to do that.
Great. Not sure if you noticed, my background is your beautiful new building from, the view from my office.
Nice.
I actually saw that and I said, gee, she has the high school back there. Wow. And it looks new.
It was very pretty tonight. I shot that picture tonight.
Oh, Melissa, you're so clever. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to stay as long as you want, Melissa, but we certainly understand if you want to have your evening. I think she's gone already. There we go. Next is update on twenty-one, twenty-two district goals and it's Dr. Gilly and senior staff.
All right. Thank you very much. We are, much like we did, I think in September, early in the year, we're going to take you all through somewhat quickly some of the high level aspects or touch points on our goals at this point. So while mid-year typically is the January timeframe for the school year for the senior team starts in July. This is sort of our mid, our midpoint right now. So this is a great time to give you some high level updates. And so what we'll do is each of the team members will take you through their respective departments. We want to talk through our three elements. You, hopefully you'll see aspects of our themes in action and sharing a high quality education, creating a culture of care and eliminating barriers. So as far as the four goals that I submitted to the committee, effective entry and direction setting. So at this point, the formal process of the, the collecting of the entry interviews has concluded, although I'm still in the informal mode. So at this point, we believe we've conducted ninety-seven formal interviews with a variety of individuals as well as groups. Ninety-seven interviews that comprises about two hundred ninety individuals. And examples of those are certainly Ask Me Union, BAFFAN, BFBU, Innovation Fund, Metco, PTO, School Committee, Steps to Success Teen Center and various town partners. So that gives you sort of an idea of the folks and that certainly doesn't name everyone, but gives you an idea both at the individual level and at the, at the group level. Maintaining our momentum during the transition. As I shared earlier, I'm on my third formal visit, rotation of visits to schools. I also hold bi-weekly individual meetings with the senior team members to understand the projects and what they're working on as well as share out our weekly community updates. As far as the new superintendent induction programs, I'm attending all of the scheduled sessions, which are two to three times per month and as well as meeting with my coach three times per month. And this certainly has the bandwidth of expanding my knowledge with practical and timely topics as well as expanding my network of individuals, my network through the individual superintendents in the state, the new superintendents. And then safely reopening and maintaining schools during COVID. We've certainly implemented the COVID testing program and protocols. We'll continue to leverage appropriate mitigation strategies and host and promote the various vaccination opportunities for eligible students and staff. And so with that, I'm going to pass the mic over to Erin to update us on strategy and performance.
Good evening, everyone. Similar to Dr. Gilly, I broke, slides down into our different areas of the strategy and performance department. In terms of communications, we have standardized our district presentations and templates and messages. We have worked collaboratively with both OTL and OSS on the SEL messages that go out to the entire community. And I believe we've improved our communications with the weekly superintendent message with photos and videos that, you know, are different than the messages we may have been used to from Dr. Merini last year. In terms of data accessibility, you all saw me present the district MCAS results to both the subcommittee and the full committee. I'm highlighting our gaps from twenty-twenty-one results and our results over time. We also created VAS input sheets for all of the appropriate staff in the districts and have been returning those within a week of the assessment deadline. And I've been providing some PD to both school leaders and at at least three schools on reviewing MCAS results and other district student data that they can use when identifying areas of success and areas for growth. Sorry. And then finally, in terms of registration and enrollment, we approved a plan for the kindergarten registration rollout, which includes translated materials and an updated website. All of the materials are newly updated as of this year. We continue to analyze enrollment, including the updated withdrawal analysis that Megan presented to you all a few meetings ago. And we assisted in updating our residency policies to better assist families who are moving into the district. And with that, I am going to pass it over to Leslie.
Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to report out on our progress in regards to the goals for the Office of Teaching and Learning. So the first one is around the essential curriculum, which involves what we're teaching, content sequencing, appropriate pacing, assessment, intervention, extension activities and instructional strategies. And we really, our goal is to provide a very clear understanding of what the expectation, expectations are in terms of what our students are learning at every grade. And we want to be really clear about that with all of our constituents, families, students, school committee members. And so this work includes quite a bit. It includes defining the curriculum, which we have done for K to five, and we were really pleased to roll out the scope and sequences for K to five. And we now have feedback sessions coming up in January where educators can give us feedback on how those scope and sequences are looking in practice. And some of that same work is happening with our middle school teachers at the department meetings. And then Gabe McCormick is coordinating some of that same work with various department leaders at the high school. There's much more work to do in that area, but in terms of our progress, this is where we are. And we are also thinking about what this means in terms of updating report cards, progress reports. And then our ultimate goal is to have a platform where we can showcase all of our resources and curriculum. In terms of grants, we manage a number of grants here in the Office of Teaching and Learning. We have funds coming from S R one, which is the CARES Act, S R two, three, title one, title two, title three, title four. And we have some really exciting collaborations with the Office of Student Services around IDEA funds, thinking about Orton-Gillingham training for our literacy specialists as well as some of our teachers who may be amenable to that in a pilot phase. So that's exciting work. But I do want to just be clear in terms of the work that it takes to manage and be in compliance of this, these grants. And I'm happy to say that we have gotten all of our grants into compliance. And so that's a huge deal for us. The Middle School Model Review, it's a district-wide comprehensive review of our middle school model. Our RFP is complete and ready to be posted by the town. We've already engaged with a couple of different firms that are really interested in this work. So we hope that they will bid on the product, project. And we've just been really excited that we've had a number of constituents review the proposal and Gabe McCormick's done an amazing job of incorporating their feedback. And so we're looking forward to see what's next. Really quickly, I'll let you kind of take in the bullets for yourself, but we know that the educator evaluation system is a really high leverage system in terms of thinking about the education that our students get. And so one of the things I just want to say is that we see this, of course, as an evaluation tool, but more importantly, we see it as a support system and making sure that educators get what they need to carry out daily instruction to, at a high level. And then lastly, our child study teams. So we are really excited about the work of this team and leveraging this team around support for teachers, support for students, but also the disproportionality work. And so we've had our first CST meetings, meeting, we completed a SWOT analysis, and I should say our first CST leader meeting. We completed a SWOT analysis where the leaders were really clear around what's working, what's not. And so when we have our follow-up meeting, we'll be following up on some of those areas of concern. And I would just be remiss if I did not shout out Michelle Herman, our senior director of K to eight teaching and learning, who has also been instrumental in the essential curriculum work.
Great, thank you, Leslie. Good evening, everybody. It's so good to see you. I'm just going to say a few things about, by way of update, within educational equity and similar to Dr. Gilly and Erin, I sort of laid this out in the form of the goals that I'm working on. So the first is just, I came into this role planning to listen and learn and build relationships. And so this began in July, with my just going around and really getting a sense from talking to so many of our community members, our educators and students about their thoughts on where we are in terms of our work toward equity. What are the things that we need to work on, et cetera? And that's been really rich for me. I set a goal to get into schools two to three times a week and I am pulling that off somehow. Usually it's more sort of like two times a week lately. But that's a little bit of where I am in terms of listening and learning. My goal was also to complete an entry plan by this month, by the end of this month. And I've been able to do that. And so my report of findings will in fact involve my impressions and observations over these last several months. It's a report of some of the early wins that I feel like that we've had. It also sort of details some barriers and some strengths that I've uncovered and, and some plans for moving forward as we begin to align with the strategic plan. In terms of reliable communication channels, I'm really proud still of our educational equity website. There are so many great features to it. There's an Equity in Action Spotlight that we sort of put up a couple of things every month. There's the diversity calendar. There's sort of events and announcements that are happening on a weekly basis. And we are finding that that site is getting a lot of traffic more and more each month. So we're really pleased to hear that educators are using resources on the website in department meetings or to plan some of their own lessons. Community members are taking advantage of it as well. In terms of the ways in which we're communicating, I sort of just gave several examples of avenues and vehicles that I'm using to sort of get the word out about some of the work that's happening, the things that we can celebrate, the pieces that we can work on. I'm really excited to be partnering with Dr. Matt Dubois on our Equity and SEL Minute because we're trying to be super intentional about pairing those and that work because both of those are priorities for the district this year. Moving into professional development, which is something that I'm so passionate and excited about. Again, there's our Equity PD menu. I will just sort of share one piece from that that I'm super excited about and that's our seed seminars. And we've spoken about this before, but there are a number of those, I believe, seven of them happening throughout the district. There is a group for educators that I get to co-lead and seed, by the way. It's just about creating conversational communities that drive personal and institutional and societal change towards social justice and it's pretty deep work. And we're super excited to have begun a seed seminar for the entire year with administrators in PSB. Mass Ready is just the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents. And I am really fortunate to be able to work with Dr. Darnisa Amonte Jackson of the DEEP Project. The DEEP stands for Disruptive Equity Education Project. And Dr. Lee Title from Harvard School of Education. And that's personal PD for me in learning more about how to lead equity work at a systemic level. So that's been pretty awesome. And then the last category is just this sort of leveraging system level drivers, including leadership competency and implementation drivers to eliminate barriers to equity. And so a couple point bullets that I wanted to throw in here are just our work with the Brookline Educators for Educator Diversity Team who are working very- who are working very hard month by month to help us do great work around hiring and recruiting, hiring, onboarding, retaining staff of color. We're obviously partnering with the Office of Human Resources. And I just wanted to throw out there, and many of you are aware of this, we have our first in-person networking and recruiting event on January 6th. I know it's a school committee night, but we're super excited to have a number of folks who are already signing up to join us. I have had the benefit of working with Metco Leadership and the OTL team in thinking about the social studies equity audit or curriculum review. We're super excited to get that even more underway. And the last bullet there is just about Brave, which is a student group. And it's led by Rowan and Rohan. Brave stands for the Brookline Racial Activists Valuing Equity. It's a coalition of student groups. It's a coalition of faculty and administrators who are working together to sort of coordinate all of the efforts within PSB around educational equity, diversity, inclusion, et cetera. So that is my report. Thanks, everyone.
Great, thank you, Janay. Good evening, everybody. I will give an update on what the Office of Student Services has been engaging in over the last few months. First up is Special Education. The program review is well underway. Our two consultants, Chris Brumbach and Dorsey Yearley have been interviewing quite a number of folks, including senior staff, a small group of school committee members, the entire group of principals, our guidance department, so all of our guidance counselors from K all the way through high school, all of these special education administrators. And next up, we are beginning to schedule focus groups for parents of students in special education. There will also be a survey that goes out to this parent group, which will be open for the entire month of January in the Superintendent Weekly tomorrow. I would urge the families of students, families of students with IEPs to look out for a link to sign up for these focus groups and a bit more information on the survey. As Leslie mentioned earlier in her update, we've also been working on the action plan that I presented back in the spring on significant disproportionality, focusing specifically on the referral sources, excuse me, at the child study team level, but also thinking about expanding our intervention options for students who both have been identified for special education services, but also those who are exhibiting academic challenges. Next up, with Guidance and Clinical Services, there's been a significant amount of support from Maria Litas and myself to support the work of Matt Dubois. We have been action planning off of the data from the Universal SEL Survey. And of course, we continue to analyze the survey data and cut the data in different ways to make sure that we're capturing all the students in need. From nursing, I think it goes without saying that we continue our COVID mitigation strategy at our schools. We've certainly seen a lot of traffic this year at all of our health clinics for both cold symptoms. We've also seen, and this isn't surprising, given our SEL survey data and uptick in visits in our clinics with psychosomatic complaints from our students, including students with low appetites, the students who are not eating when they're in school. So our nurses have been busy during the school day and then also in the evenings with coordinating our vaccine clinics. We have held eight up to up to from September to December and continue to plan for additional vaccine clinics. And as a reminder for folks that the vaccine clinics are not just for students, it's for adults too. So for those who are still interested, we are also providing vaccine clinics for adults who need their boosters or who would like to be vaccinated who are not. I will pass it off to Mr. Rippon.
All right. Thank you very much. And so there are four areas of focus I wanted to touch on. Starting with facilities, I'm pleased to report that, and I'm pleased to spotlighter, Brookline is a leader in sustainability, so much so that MSBA reached out to to Matt Gillis and myself, as well as Suzuki, Tamara Warburg. And between the three of us, Brookline was well represented. They had three different groupings of seminars within a day called Massachusetts Schools Embrace a Sustainable Future. And we were able to talk about largely the geothermal project that was supported by recent town meeting at the Driscoll, as well as the Pierce School and its design with an eye towards a net zero footprint at the end of the day. And again, very well represented, and I believe very well received. In fact, our PowerPoints were just submitted to MSBA so that they can be incorporated somewhere on their website. Next, in payroll, just as a highlight, but not just only payroll, I have worked with our department in administration and finance, along with Ty Fluker and her department, to come up with a working group with the interim Finance Director and also Assistant Town Administrator, Justin Castle Nova Davis, to meet, but actually expanding on that. And we've just set up monthly meetings with the right people to go over procurement with Dave Jenikakis, if necessary, Treasury and accounting, as well, and within accounting, general accounting, general ledger, and payroll. And the goal here is rather than meet to go over problems, meet to go over issues before they become problems. And I just, the spirit of collaboration is just wonderful. You can't say enough about Justin and his team. New hires, I'm pleased to report that the two vacancies that were in the the corner of the fifth floor, that's, I guess, we'll call it my corner, have been filled. Most recently, Kiana Price is a program manager, and she's been hitting the ground running with respect to managing our vaccination program, the administration of and tracking. And then prior to Kiana, oh, also Kiana finishing where I left off and getting us totally caught up in our financial assistance program. And she'll be working, you know, with Erin Cooley to assist getting our budget book into Open Gov, you know, and has been working getting trained in Open Gov. Melissa Sousa is our new payroll specialist. And we're lucky to have both Kiana and Melissa, but Melissa has over 15 years' experience working in the Cambridge Public Schools in a similar capacity. And so having somebody with that history working with that similar volumes of people to be paid has just, it's been wonderful, allows us to be much more responsive to queries that we get with respect to payroll. And then lastly, working with, you know, first Mariah on the committee, Linus, developing a calendar, and then on a short accelerated schedule, given my entry here, you know, meeting deadline for the capital improvement plan, which had to be in mid-September, and then going right into operating in early November, engaging all the budget managers and working with them on structure and protocols to incorporate all of their requests into what I'm calling a top-line number that was submitted last Friday to Melissa Goth to be incorporated at the Select Board Meeting that was touched on earlier this evening.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I thought it'd be a great time to update you on the COVID-19 policy process that I built and implemented in order to get the information we needed as far as our staffing in regards to their vaccination status. As you all may know, I created a Google form to, a Google vaccination at a station form to collect the data and our our staff members' status, whether they were fully vaccinated, partially, and what their plans were, or whether they were requesting an exemption request. I'm happy to report that of our active employees, 94% of them so far have completed the form. Those numbers continue to go up from the day that I ran this data. Of the staff who have completed the form, 98% of them have reported to us that they're fully vaccinated. 1% of the staff members that have completed the form have asked for exemption request. And we're continuing to process those results as they come through and request accordingly on case-by-case situations. Also, as a convenience, I created paper form for our staff members who have requested due to different preferences. So just trying to make sure holistically that we're able to provide services to our staff and while we're asking them to provide us with this very important information. Granted, everyone hasn't filled it out, as Sam already gave you a little hint to. I've been working with Kiana Price, our new program manager, to actually to run the reports and make sure that she's keeping in touch with staff members who we are looking to complete the form, find out any obstacles they may have. Sometimes there's simple things as far as like, you know, technology issues, uploading, or they're, you know, they'll send a code to us that we're unable to open. So she's been really instrumental in that work. We were able to work together and send out our first reminders for our staff members electronically to have them to fill out the form to those who we identified who hadn't filled out the form. That was a great process, and so that'll be, continue to come out biweekly to employees as it was, the policy was November 1st. And so recognizing that of the of the, I think the Moderna shot that it is, it, I think, in order to get both shots, it takes about, it's a 28-day process. So updating them just to see where they are, letting them know that we're working with them. We want to know any obstacles they have that we can help them with in that process. Also happy to report that we were able to start the district's weekly surveillance pool testing program on the 23rd of November for employees who have approved vaccination exemptions on file. And so we, that that has been off and running. We've had opportunities to see what works and what doesn't work. And so we're working with that 1% that has requested exemptions to be able to provide them with opportunity to get tested, should they need to. One of the things that I wanted to also discuss were some of the testing obstacles that we've seen as we've gone through this process and been implementing this policy for the district. Generally, we found as of recent and like the last month that scheduling PCR tests and receiving PCR test results are taking longer for individuals. So where this particularly has impacted the district is when our staff members have cold-like symptoms and they're following attendance protocols or whatnot and having, you know, calling out and when they're having cold-like symptoms to the time in which it takes now to schedule a PCR test, we've noticed that those times are longer. And when they're getting their results, it can impact their attendance. And just making sure that we have enough coverage. So we're looking into the possibilities of exploring a Bynox Now Rapid Test and Stay option for our staff that have symptoms. And so that's off and running, working with Tricia and Sam to look at the different opportunities we have to be able to implement something like that to keep staff in schools in front of our students, our scholars, when possible. Thank you.
All right. And so with that committee, we will stand for any questions that you may have about what we shared with you this evening.
Well.
I just had a question on Ty, on the last piece that that you brought up. Test and stay in students is for students who are, excuse me, asymptomatic, close contacts. I guess I have a little bit of concern about pushing that out to people with symptoms, especially with the early data on Omicron and how it very much will mimic a cold. So just food for thought for, you know, I'm sure Tricia and all of you are working through that, but just I know that Panel Four is taking it up tomorrow and I I guess I caution a little bit on folks with symptoms using test and stay.
Okay, I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, Mariah.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I mean, this was really great as an overview presentation, really wonderful. So thank you to see all of that information. I had one question on the on the vaccination, the 94%, and sort of, is there, is there a plan that is possible to be articulated about what happens if people don't fill in the form?
So where we are now, trying to be mindful that there are some obstacles, making sure that everybody has received the communication about the policy and where it is. So we're, while, when the policy came out, the process didn't exist. So in building it and being able to identify the data for who needed to fill out the form, we're working through that. It's a work in progress. I'm happy to say that when we initially sent out reminders, there were about 500 or so employees that, and it wasn't necessarily that they actually had, and some, there were some, you know, issues maybe with technology. They needed the paper form or whatnot, but even from our first reminder, that that number is below 100. So like I said, from the time that I pulled the data, the numbers have gone up a little bit. So that's where we are right now. I don't believe that we're at a spot where we're going to start progressive discipline or anything of like that nature that is in the policy at this point. Because we're given this opportunity on the human side to really work with people and then see like what their obstacles are. And then if we get to a point where there are just people that are like dodging us and not really responding, which we haven't seen as of yet, then that would be the plan, depending on what unit they're in or whatnot. Obviously, that varies depending on the type of employee it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had a question for Janay. You said, thank you, that you have done some listening and learning and you have a report of findings. Is the report available for us to see or?
So my plan was to spend some time going through it with Dr. Guillory at our next check-in. And so he and I are in conversation about what we want to do with it once the two of us go over it. So we can let you.
Fine, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to say again, thank you to everyone for being here tonight and for putting this together. I find it very helpful to have an overview and what the current issues are and what it is you're working so hard on. So thank you very much to all of you. Seeing no other hands raised, I think we will move on, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
We're going to Helen, you're up to you with legislative priorities.
Right. I think everybody has a copy of the draft. And I unfortunately cannot see everybody, so I'm hoping, if you don't, you'd say something, but I'm pretty sure that Robin has circulated. We met on Tuesday to finalize it. I think it fairly well represented. I think it fairly well represents both staff and school committee input into the issues. I guess, are there any questions? Or comments about it? Or additions or subtractions?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Helen, for you and your committee there for doing this. There's a lot here. So you clearly.
It'll be a long meeting, I think.
Well, there's a lot going on. But thank you for, for doing this and for the support that you, you have a real committee now. So thank, that's.
Yeah, which is, and they've been excellent. They've been really helpful and getting it together and making sure we dot all the i's. Cross all, not cross the t's and dot the i's, but.
Are we voting on this? So we're just?
Yes, we need to vote it so that Robin can send it out to our legislators. It'll give him time to look at it. Also, just as an aside, at the event with Jake Oshin Slush on Saturday, I invited him to come to our legislative forum. He said he didn't know if he'd have the time, but I also spoke to his aide who said she will be coming. So we're going to really have a full house. We're also going to be having our two new representatives, Ruth Balzer and Honan, who's first name, David, I think it is. No, not David, sorry. Kevin, okay, Kevin. Honan will be joining us also along with our veteran group, even those I think who won't be representing us anymore. So there will be quite a few people there and I expect a robust conversation on all of these issues.
Is, is this virtual or in person?
It's going to be virtual this year. I wasn't sure where we would be and it just felt like that made more sense at this point. I do hope next year we will be in person because I, I do think it makes a difference. But January and with Omicron, I think it's not a great.
Would you like to move this, Helen?
I would love to. I'd love to move the legislative priorities for 2022.
And do we have a second? Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, I think we'll, we'll take the vote. Val?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that work.
Thank you.
We look forward to the, to the meeting.
January 10th from 3 till 5.
Sounds good. Moving on to the possible discussion, possible vote on school committee communication strategy, Stephen and Mariah.
All right, do you want to start?
I don't want to start. I would love if you started. Thank you.
Right. So it's quite similar to what you saw last time. There's a couple of differences. Section three is now different. The, just to sum it up, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, rather than have lengthy email signature, we're proposing instead to have a short line that links you to a page on the Brookline, on Brookline's website that lists who you would contact if you wanted a rapid and suitable response. And that page would be a page called contacting the school committee. The other piece was we, at the, on 3.2, we talked a little bit about what happens if, say, you receive a large number of formal letters in the email, in your emails. What's your responsibility in that? In that scenario? And a couple of things. One, we talked about, you know, you always have the opportunity to delegate or to ask your fellow school committee members to assist with responses. And, and yeah, that's it. I, I guess I would just say one more thing, which is that this is not a policy. These are proposed norms. So in looking for feedback here and a possible vote, we just want to, I would just want to remind everyone that this is not, this is not binding for the school committee, for this look many, but rather a statement saying that we'd like to abide by these norms as a way of streamlining our communications, providing prompts and relevant feedback to community members and also supporting the administration and ensuring that communications come with a more unified voice.
Right. Yeah, the other thing is that last time we had proposed putting some of this, that now is a webpage into an auto reply. And we definitely heard loud and clear that people were concerned about that. So we have done away with this idea of an auto reply and instead, as Stephen said, the, some of that similar content would just go onto a webpage where it's accessible to people before they've written to us as well. But again, we could put a link to the, we could have a sort of a standardized signature that all of us have that say, you know, learn about our best practices here, the what, what's written in the document under, you know, the top of 3.1 signature on click here to learn about.
And I'm stressing that this is norm, not a policy. Jennifer Monopoly, in part because you're on my shoulder as I was thinking about this with Mariah. Just making sure that we're not, we're not mandating anything from school committee members. There's still lots of freedom with how you respond to constituents, but that these are, these are norms that we'd like to share.
Yeah, and it's a pilot. I mean, this is an idea, right? If, if it doesn't work well, we'll try something else. But we're hoping this or whatever final version of this we have will sort of streamline. And we had a good example of it this week where, you know, we did have more communication than some other weeks. And it would be an opportunity for, you know, whether it's whoever was, you know, assigned this past week, they might take 25 emails and then they might just pass it along to someone else and say, okay, you're up for the next 25. And that person sort of triages them and either responds or, or if they address a specific issue, assigns it to someone else to respond to.
What do y'all think?
I think you're very brave to do this. So thank you for that effort. That's for sure. Let's open it up. Let's have some conversation about this if we can. Now Helen?
Yeah, um, so, you know, I think, I think we should use this document as a pilot and see how it works and maybe come back in six months or doing a workshop in the summer and, and sort of refine it before making it a norm. I mean, you could do it either way. You could just assume it's a norm and then we'll review it in six months. But I think it is important to see it. Is it working? Isn't it working? Does it, is it meeting the goals that we're trying to accomplish? That's all.
Other thoughts?
Andy?
I just have a comment about a detail in the table that lists the subcommittees, the, the chairs and the, the staff. I think for two of them, the staff liaison is not the person listed there. So for policy, I don't think it's Casey anymore. It's Linus. And for government relations, I believe it's Janay.
Yeah.
If, if that person is the liaison.
Yep. I'll fix that in the, in the Google version and then we can reshare it.
Helen, do you have another question or just that leftover? Okay. So just, you know, in terms of if a school committee member is kind of on the email response for the five or six weeks, I take it that it's a week at a time or is it, are you thinking five weeks at a time? No. Well, I guess I'm asking.
I think that's up to the group too. What do people prefer? And some people want, someone might want to take it as a block and other people might want to scatter it. I would think that what might make sense is we could just put together a spreadsheet and have people just pick their weeks.
Okay. Andy, you had a thought about that?
Well, just that some times of year are predictably much heavier in email than others. I'd love to be assigned the summer, for example, but that's not going to happen. So I, I don't think, I don't think such a lot of blocks are necessarily the, the way to go.
I'm after Andy in the summer.
So Mariah, so that's what you, you were thinking that it would be like a spreadsheet and people would sign up?
Yeah, it's like a time share, right? Where you all have to, except it's like a reverse time share where you have to, you don't go on vacation, you have an assignment to do.
The opposite, yeah.
Yeah.
What other thoughts do people have? Yeah, Susan?
So first of all, thank you again for doing this. I think the one thing, well, you may have addressed this, but I, I'm a version I'm looking at, are we taking off? We are taking off the auto reply thing, right? The version I'm looking at still has, okay. Then the, then the only other question that I have is this, the first two in terms of establish office hours and public comment. Like there are other things that we have talked about that I think are important, depending on what we're trying to do with this document. So we talked about going to, say, councils, either on Zoom or in person, when they're talking about school improvement plans. We talked about going to different schools at different points to, if there are like issues going on, doing, at least I talked about, I was interested in more of a town hall format rather than public comment because public comment is so stilted and there really isn't an opportunity. I mean, I love office hours and I think we should absolutely do them. I'm just wondering if there are more topical ones though, where we want to actually sponsor something as opposed to just whoever shows up, but like, like do an education outreach thing on the budget, on the annual budget process, or do an annual outreach on, or do a particular outreach on of topics. So I think just a town hall format or Q and A or something that's more engaging might be a subset of number one. I'm not really sure, but sort of the other thing that I was thinking about from the last conversation, if I'm the only one interested in it, that's okay. But, but just something beyond kind of the, the public comment format. I mean, the other thing is that we talked about in our, when we sell a policy around public, and public hearings are different from public comments. And if we're talking about this, they just have a different role in sort of governance. And so I'm just wondering if we should put public hearing on this list also, so people understand that that's part of our community. It's, it's a different way to think about communications. But I think I'm just kidding. I was starting to get a little bit lost about the things that are and the things that aren't on the list. Without making it enormously burdensome, those were just the two, of all the things that we do in terms of communications, like liaisons and whatever. Those were the two that kind of sprung to mind as to whether or not we wanted to address them here.
I would think, like, we wrote it as establish office hours as that heading, but maybe it's really just establish more forums for bi-directional communication and, and, and that I think hits on what you're talking about. And we did talk about having them, you know, for example, having them thematically around outreach and such. And so I think we can, I can, I'll put some notes in from what you just said into that document. And and we can keep going from there.
I guess. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I wrote down attend school site council also. Yep.
I guess I think the goal for right now is to establish some momentum around norms for community engagement that could be refined and iterated and can be expanded to include more channels for communication as they arise or as we think of what good norms would be for them. So I wonder, I guess I'm looking at you, Susan, what you would think about moving this forward as the first draft of community engagement norms with the idea that maybe after three months we'd revisit it, we'd figure out how to reorganize parts of it or add different topics to it. Again, with the goal of starting to build momentum around norms for community engagement.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think, yes, the answer is yes. I think the, the, the ones that struck me were because public hearings are about a specific issue, like it's, it's a vote we're going to take, whereas public comment is just take all comers on almost every meeting docket. Everybody gets three minutes. You know, it's just sort of a general time, whereas public hearings are supposed to be doing something different from a governance point of view. I think that's the only other one that I would just maybe name because that's one that people get confused about. But yes, in general, I'm, I'm quite comfortable with everything, with, with things you said.
What is section two of public hearings and comment? Because the one piece that I think does apply to comment particularly is the encouragement for the school committee to, to respond to promote civility or correct misinformation. So I wouldn't want that just to be for public hearing, I would think.
Are you saying, Susan, you want more public hearings versus public comment?
I think she's saying that that's more applicable to public hearing than public comment, right? Especially proactive outreach.
I'm going to pull up the document as I'm typing in it. So you all can see, I changed this heading to
Yeah.
Establish this, what we talked about. I put office hours once a month, formal outreach, additional in-person events. Was there attend school site council, other town halls, e.g. around budget. That's sort of alluding to what you were just talking about, Susan. And then I, I just changed this from public comment to public hearings and comment, and then public comment. And then I just want to make sure, but I'm not sure I have this right. So if you could, Susan, clarify what you mean.
Yeah, no, no, public, you know, public hearing is, is when we are, it is the opportunity for the public to come speak about a particular vote that we are about to take. So we have a public hearing on the budget vote. We have a public hearing on a warrant article that we're considering taking a position on. So it's just a specific topic-specific.
But what is the norm related to this that you are requesting?
So I think, no, the norms are similar. That's why I'm saying I'm agreeing that it can be in the same category. I would I would just list out what public comment is and what a public hearing is because I think this, it's a similar set of norms, but there are two things that people just get really confused about. If that makes sense.
Yeah. So basically something like, just NB definition, and I'm not typing in now, definition of one versus the other. Okay.
That's all. Yep.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. I, I have to say that I'm happy to vote for this. I will just say once again that I'm, I'm a little, I'm happy to try it. I'm a little nervous about commenting after public comment because sometimes I think we just have to let people like have their say, you know, at the microphone without somebody starting to argue with them about something. So I don't, if, do I have to start engaging with people in public comment when I'm encouraged to? Or I just, sometimes I just think the, the public needs to be, have a chance to be heard. That's all.
Is there something we need to do in that language to make it, let me pull it up again, to make it clear that it's an opportunity as opposed to a mandate? Now, of course, I can't find the.
I, I would also say, Susan, that the, the norm that we were proposing wasn't to argue with a commenter on the merits of their comment, but just to encourage civility and to correct obvious disinformation.
Well, no, but also we're talking about this summative reflection.
Oh, right, right, right.
That's the part where we're exactly this idea of not engaging in a back and forth, but sort of an overarching reflection. But it's an opportunity. No one's encouraged to do it. It's just that it's there.
Maybe, maybe we can say briefly clarifying misperceptions because, you know, I, I always worry about there's something wrong on the internet problem and I have to fix it. Because there are so many things wrong on the internet. People say, oh, if we were correcting the misperceptions of everyone who comes to public comment, some of those nights, it would be long. So maybe briefly correct misperceptions and then at the end, just thematic summary comments. So we're not just to, just to your point about not engaging in back and forth.
Well, are you suggesting that we're going to comment after each speaker?
No.
No, I think so.
It's summative. It's really meant to be at the very end, right?
At the end, right, okay.
But I think Susan's further emphasizing it's not like individual, it's like themes that multiple people brought up, we can respond to as opposed to.
I, Helen has her hand up, but I think Jennifer had her hand up. Jennifer, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I, I just want to respond to the, this recent conversation, the last few speakers. In reacting to public comment, I think I brought this up last time. I, I'm just concerned that if some speakers' comments are responded to and others are not responded to, they may feel that we didn't view their comments as, as important as others. So if 10 people come to speak on five different topics and we only respond to one or two of those topics, I don't know, I don't really know how we address that, but I do think it's a concern that I have that people will feel like, well, why didn't you respond to my comments? Why did you only respond to the, to, to this topic? But that wasn't why I originally put my hand up. I'm quite, my question is, when we were talking about email responses from the committee, what does it mean to say, is the second question? There's a second question listed on the paper. Should I forward it to school committee for committee response? So I think I'm confused about what it means to be a committee response versus an individual responding because they're on duty, so to speak, for responding? So I don't know.
Maybe I shouldn't. I think the better word here is on-duty response.
Should I forward to school underscore committee for individual response? Is that what you're saying?
For whoever, essentially, like, this is what I was thinking in this case is like, say, an email goes to you, but it's not really to you. It's a generic email. And so you, you know, and, and, and so you're not, you have the choice. If it's not really an email to you, you can just say, well, you want to forward it on to the person on duty to respond to on sort of, because it's their week on duty. And you might never exercise that. Someone might just respond themselves, but it's, it's, it's considering it, right? You have the option to, if it's just an email that you want to have the on-duty person respond to, you can just forward it on.
Yeah, I think that sometimes we get emails and it has all of us on it. And then sometimes I get it again through school underscore committee that Robin forwards to us. And then I'm just wondering how if I get another email and sometimes it says it's to me, but I, I think that other people are getting the same one, but with their name on it.
And that's why it's an opportunity, exactly where it's really a generic email, though maybe it only went to you to forward it to that email, because then
If I do that, that might be the third or fourth time that that same email has been sent to that person.
Right. And they would then say, oh, I got four of those emails. I'm going to respond once.
I just think that's tough when you get 60 in a day to start figuring out how, like, I, I don't know. It's, it's complicated. I, I don't have the answer, but
I think that we can test it out.
Yeah.
And see how it goes. Or we can delete this. We can just say the question is, should I forward it to senior leadership? Like, is it really a school committee response or is it on the, on the staff side of the house?
Right. When we get, what is the idea or the thought, I guess, behind, when we get a number of emails on the same topic within one day and you're on duty and it is a school committee response? And not a senior leadership question? Are we create, are we creating one response that goes out multiple times? I don't know.
I think that's up to the person who is on duty to decide how they do that.
Okay.
Helen, did you?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. I, I was wondering why you use the word email hygiene?
Hygiene has to do with cleanliness, right? It's been messy.
We're not taking showers in the emails. We're being showered by the emails.
Hygiene has a whole bunch. They talk about industrial hygiene and, you know, their hygiene has many contextual uses. And this could be one of them.
We can call it protocols. I'm okay with that.
I think that might be a little.
I like hygiene, but okay.
It may be an engineering term.
It may be.
Other thoughts or comments? Val, and then Andy, okay.
I, I think that people are getting this already on who to maybe send it to, but should we add the building committees? From capital? Or just leave?
In this list down here?
Yeah, or just leave it to Helen to forward.
No, we could do that. I think that it's like great to think about.
Yeah.
You know, parsing out areas of responsibility. If I can figure out how to add a row.
You can do that, or I can forward them, either way.
Well, it's less work for you, right? If it just, the whole point is that we're sending stuff to the right people. So I need to add one more. And I don't actually, I guess it's Val, Andy, or is it Andy or Helen? Who is in charge of Pierce for both of you? I'm not the staff side, sorry, the school committee side is what I'm gonna say.
Helen is the chair of that building committee.
Okay, and VHS is Susan. And I don't know who the staff person, is it the principal on each side? Or who would the staff, or is it Matt? Or who is the staff?
Could be Tony.
Does Tony, would Tony field emails that go to the school committee? Like staff emails?
No, well, I leave it at the three chairs and if they'll determine if it needs to go to somebody else.
Okay.
I think that makes more sense.
Okay.
Unless Linus or, or Sam have a different idea.
Andy, did you?
Oh, yes. I, I have to say, I found Jen's point earlier to be a pretty powerful one about whether the norm should be that we're encouraged to respond during public comment. I would feel much more comfortable if that were limited to promoting civility and correcting not misperceptions, but just actual misstatements of fact. Because I don't, I really don't want people to feel like we, they haven't been heard or they haven't been attended to just because nobody responded to them on the spot.
Why don't we, I mean, how do others feel on this one? Because I, I would be okay deleting that last bullet for now.
I feel like we hear.
It can be very frustrating, right, for, for people to offer public comment and then not hear back. But I think here that this solution could be worse than the problem.
Well, I think my, my personal feeling is we hear so much that people are unhappy about coming and getting no feedback. And again, this is a pilot and it doesn't even have to be a pilot until the summer. If it has, if there's something that's not working, we can make adjustments. But it's worth trying and seeing what happens, I guess. That's my feeling on it.
I guess I'm thinking back to some episodes of public comment that we've had since I've been on the school committee and thinking how that would have gone had the norm been that we are encouraged to respond on the spot. And I think it would have been.
But this doesn't say you're encouraged to respond on the spot. It says you have the opportunity if you want. Maybe no one takes it.
Encouraged. It does say that we're encouraged to respond.
No, this is, no, no, this is when promoting civility, maybe that's the part that needs to be clarified. Like, but really, it's just like, it was really about if someone is, you know, bad-mouthing somebody else or saying something that's factually wrong. That was really what that is there. So maybe that's the language we need to clarify. To respond to public comments to promote civility or briefly clarify. Does that make people feel better?
It's the third bullet, I think, Andy, that you and Jennifer have concerns about, right?
Yeah, especially, I mean, both the second and the third, but especially the third, again, because, you know, if, if some people have a dialogue and others don't have it, that, that may be for reasons having nothing to do with how seriously we, we take the comment, right?
Perhaps we could just quickly poll the school committee to see their opinions on this. My, my preference is to leave it, but I am happy to defer to the majority on this.
Jennifer, did you want to talk to this point?
Yeah, well, I actually was going to go back to an idea that I think Susan brought up, which was the idea of a town hall, which is more of a bi-directional conversation versus a public comment or public hearing. And so I do understand that it's very frustrating for members of the public to come to public comment and make comment and then not be, not have the opportunity to be responded to. I do worry that if, if each person or each topic isn't responded to, there will be a misperception of, of a value statement made by us. So I, I still, that's still a concern for me. I think that this, that this solution may create another problem or a worse problem than what we have right now. So I think I would be more in favor of some, of instituting some more like office hours is that opportunity for people to have a conversation or a town hall is, is an opportunity for our conversation. I think if we're going to make a change like this to public comment, we should go through the policy process because we do have a policy around this. And so I would encourage us to look at that and make a change there instead of in norms.
Helen, did you have?
Well, I agree with Jennifer. I think she and Andy have a point there. I think it's, it's, it can be a rabbit hole that we can go down. What, what you're saying is absolutely correct, Jennifer and Andy. People will feel slighted who aren't responded to. I do think with civility, that is important. And I actually think that should probably be the chair, not school committee that responds to, to something like that. Because then I, I, that I see it as the chair's responsibility to maintain order in the meeting and civility. So those were my two comments.
You know, it's also possible that the chair is just the one that does a summative, you know, we heard about this.
Yes, I, I agree on that too.
You know, and you just, you just list the, the three themes we heard tonight, or, you know, we heard people on both sides of the issue around this. Thank you for your input. Then you've acknowledged that you've heard from them, you've named the theme or the topic, but you're not getting into a back and forth. So that's a possibility.
I do agree with, with Jen, that if we do these town halls and there's more opportunity for back and forth, it might ease some of the pressure of the public comment structure of people not feeling heard. And so there's that. And, and I also agree with you, Jen, that if we were to make this formal, we shouldn't formalize it through a norm anyway. It would have to go through the policy process anyway. So do we modify that language to reflect the chair might do some of these things, like the? I do want to give up, like, I think though, let's say there's occasions where Suzanne might have one of the Suzanne, the chair might, might miss either the chair themselves is being, is, is under some stressful moment and it's up to all of us to support the chair in maintaining those in maintaining civility or whatever else. Where you might not be available in the moment, maybe you misheard something. I just don't, I don't want to park it all on the chair when it's really, I think even if led by you, it's a shared responsibility to, to do those things, right?
I mean, you could say the chair and the vice chair, then at least you have two ears and two eyes and you know.
Okay, so.
I, I would, I would ask to, to leave that second bullet as is, so that we're all, we all feel it's incumbent upon us to promote civility, but I, but I do understand the counterargument to the third bullet. Yeah, I like that phrasing, Mariah. But I think it makes sense to remove the third bullet and, and includes in the like, and, and try to develop a norm around that for a town hall.
Okay, so we're going to delete out the third one?
That's my suggestion.
And is anybody not wanting to delete it out?
Well, so I, I just have a, a question. I, I thought Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I thought that you're, the bi-directional was more related to bullet two and not three, or am I incorrect?
I think I think it's a little bit of both. It's really small. I'm trying to read bullet three because I had it pulled up on my other screen and I'm toggling now that I'm speaking. Members have the opportunity to post.
Is that better?
For post-comment, yes, thank you. Thematic summative reflection. Yeah, I, I think it's I just, I could foresee a situation in the second bullet where, like, I guess I'm okay, definitely promoting civility, but I think that's also part of our, our policy already. And that's something that the chair and vice chair have done in the, in past years, have sort of addressed comments, perhaps that were, had a lack of civility. But I get the, the briefly clarifying misperceptions and misstatements of fact, it's important that we have an opportunity to do that, but I just think that, that becomes a gray area. I, I can foresee situations in which I, I think it's a slippery slope. I, I do. I think that it's better off in a, in policy. And I think that back and forth conversations are better off in another format. If we want to change public comment to a back and forth conversation, then that's one thing. Or if we want to have public comment and separate town halls or office hours, I just, I think that we've got a lot of things going on here. And I think we need to know why we, why we're making the choices we're making and sort of codify what our intentions are.
I, perhaps, Jennifer, if we just strengthen the language to say something like briefly clarify obvious misstatements of fact or something like that. I just think if somebody gets up and says we should really start drinking bleach to prevent Omicron, it's a cum, but it's, we, we have to, as a school committee, be have a norm of being able to respond to something like that. I, I hear you about the slippery slope, but I still think given what has been a pretty heated, divisive, polarizing educational forum over the past couple of years, a step in this direction is useful right now. That, that's my counterargument.
Yeah, I would, I, I still think that we do have a public, we have a policy that addresses public comment. And I think if we are going to change the way we run public comment, we need to do that through policy. Because we have a policy and I don't think that, I would, I think that it would be useful to compare this language with the language in our policy, because I'm not sure that the intent of them matches. And, and I'm not saying that I, that I oppose having a back and, like, changing the way we do public comment, but that is typically not the way school committee has operated with public comment. So I just, I think we need to be clear about whether or not we're going to be running a town hall or we're having public comment where we hear feedback. Responding is different. So I don't, I don't think I'm going to change much on that. So whatever language we have, I think I feel pretty strongly about that. I, I'm.
I, I actually support you, Jennifer, on this. I just, I do think it's a slippery slope. It's, it's just difficult to do this and to do it well and to do it quickly.
So do you want to delete out all of section two?
Under public comment, you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, we have a lot going on, but number two is sort of, in my opinion, the least transformative of what we're up to. If we start doing town halls and better email hygiene, I'm going to use the word hygiene anyway, Helen, then I think it will make a big difference. So I'm not too hung up on it if.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would suggest we start with one and three and, and maybe take a look at our policy on public comment and see.
Could you put it on the screen?
What on the screen? The public comment?
Our, our public comment policy.
Well, wouldn't that just go through policy? We wouldn't do that now, right?
I meant to share, sure.
I mean, do people want to, I mean, what's not here and what I don't think is in our policy, and we could decide whether or not we want to have, we want to incorporate a town hall idea into public comment, or if we're going to be turning public comment into town hall format. We don't have that in here. Does that, is that something people are interested in? Or do we want to try the office hours and the email hygiene? I'm also, I'm with Helen on the hygiene. The, the, the email protocol or, or whatever we want to call it. Do we want to try sort of one and three and then see if we want to add in a town hall? Or I don't know, that's another possibility.
Well, one includes town halls. It includes office hours, town halls, that sort of thing. As we redrafted it a couple of minutes ago, let me pull it back up again. So it has office hours, formal in-person events, school site council, other town halls.
Oh, sorry, thank you. My, I was looking, I'm flipping between screens and mine is not, I need to.
Yeah, this, this is the live version as opposed to the PDF that's in the packet.
Okay.
So shall I delete out two? And we go, we start with one and three and see.
And have further questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want a motion on this? You want to vote?
Can I, can I move that that we adopt these as norms for our initial norms for communication strategy, as community engagement strategy?
I'm seconding that.
Thank you, Mariah. More conversation. Helen, your hand is up. Do you still want to speak? I know. Okay, same, no more hands. We can take a vote.
Sorry, just one other thing. Is there any, like a sentence or two we can put that reflects the conversation? This is a draft that we are piloting this, that this is something that we are trying to do to respond to a complicated situation, you know, dynamic situation that we want to, you know, we're going to revisit. I mean, I'm very comfortable to the extent that these are things that we are trying out because we are aware that the current mechanisms are not serving our interest, are not serving the public's need, no, it's serving the public's needs. So I was wondering if we can just put a sentence or two disclaimer that focuses, that reflects the focus of this conversation, which, which makes me much, much more comfortable voting yes on it, for all the reasons we've been saying.
Mariah, Stephen, is that okay?
Yeah. Will you trust us to write that introductory sentence after a vote or shall we do it? Okay.
No. We don't do wordsmithing at the table.
We're trusting.
It can go on till 12 at night. Can go on till twelve at night.
Okay, see.
I did just change the.
Thirty-five minutes wordsmithing was.
I am just changing it though to, the very minimum, the heading is a pilot also, and then that way it makes it clear.
Mariah.
Exactly, hygiene pilot.
Let's take a vote then, Val.
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Uh, Stephen and or Mariah, are you willing to kind of help us get this started? In terms of getting a schedule going and seeing how that works?
Sure, I can create that schedule template.
Thank you, Stephen. That's great. Thank you so much for doing this. This is important work and um, you, as I said, I think you were brave to even start it. So that's great. And we'll see how it goes.
We're gonna need a partner. Is it, should we be reaching out to, like, we need, we had talked about putting this, some of this content up on the website to have a dedicated page. So would it be Robin we should work with or Mike? Who should we be connecting with to give our content to develop that page? I saw Erin turned on her video, maybe you'll.
Hi, Erin, you guys, you gonna volunteer, Mike?
Um, I mean, I certainly can. He can, he can help out with that, but I think obviously like he'll, he would need some guidance on what you want to include. And you know, Mariah, similarly to how we worked on the reopening.
The content's already written. It just needs to be dropped onto the page. So.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Are we posting who's, who's on duty for, you know, for the email response? Okay, just curious.
No, also because remember, we're going to talk about, like, we have this idea, if you hit your limit of twenty-five a week, you get to pass it. There's no guarantee that the person who's written is going to be the person that responds to you.
Gotcha.
Because they're sort of the, they're, they're the, they're the triage person, so.
Okay, we're attracted. Okay, we're moving to school committee actions. Dr. Gilley, did you want to take us through the school calendars?
I think. Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
Yep.
It's in your folder, so I will um, just briefly go through the letter, um, the cover letter that attached, that's attached to it. We are pleased to be able to share the final drafts of the calendars for the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four school years for your review and approval. You will recall that we shared two drafts at the December second meeting. We have decided to move ahead with what was formerly titled draft two. As requested with ease, uh, for ease of reference by families and staff, the lunar, lunar new year has been added to the key in each calendar. It just so happens for the next two years, the lunar new year occurs on the weekend. I do want to draw your attention to one important update to the calendars made since our last meeting. In the course of planning to meet structured learning time for the time requirements for high school students, we became aware that the high school may not delay the start of the school year for grades ten through twelve to offer ninth graders a day of orientation. High school leaders are already planning for this change. All students must be scheduled for a hundred eighty days. There's no mechanism um, to do this, um, which would carve out a separate day for ninth grade orientation. The fact that ninth graders will have their own space at twenty-two Tappan will make it easier to continue to offer an orientation event for the first day of school, even with all the students present. The high school is prepared to organize a thoughtful orientation for ninth graders uh, that is mindful uh, of our important traditions. And they will share more information with families about this change in the coming weeks and months. By having all students start on the same day, the high school faculty and staff will have the same instructional start day with students. The key on both calendars has been changed to reflect the new start day. All students in the district grades one through twelve uh, will start on the same day. And there were also some other holiday corrections uh, and religious uh, day corrections that we also made in the calendar. So these uh, should be um, reflective of the committee's input.
Helen, is your hand up?
It is this time. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have the documents in front of me, but I'm, I'm trying to hear. So with kindergarten, we usually have half of the kindergarten class come Monday and the other half come the next day.
No impact to kindergarten, grades one through twelve.
Wanted to hear, okay, all right. Yeah, and I must register, I'm sorry that we can't have the ninth graders there. Uh, I, I do agree, all kids need to be in for a hundred and eighty days. But I think having the ninth graders have the campus to themselves for a half a day, I mean, is really important. I think they, they end up, you know, getting to understand that the school, the, the, you know, having tours and all that. And I think it's, you know, maybe there's some other way also to include them the day before school begins. Uh, whether it's with the junior um, mentors, taking them around just for a tour of the high school if nothing else. So that's a suggestion.
Yeah, Andy?
Yeah, I see that both of these calendars have um, teachers and paraprofessionals reporting before September first. Does that require um, sign on by the BU?
The BU has reviewed uh, the calendars, um, but the language actually says September first or the Wednesday. So this falls within the parameter of that provision.
Thanks.
Mariah?
Just a logistical question, assuming we vote these tonight, when will they get posted on the um, on the website? And will they be in your Friday announcement?
Vote tonight, they will be.
Okay, just because like, people keep asking me about the calendars, people are like with camp, so it's great to know that it'll be out there.
I move it.
I'll second.
Any other conversation questions about this? Comments?
I, I just wanted to second sort of um, what Helen was saying about the ninth grade day on campus and how valuable that is. And I hope something can be worked out to afford ninth graders an opportunity to tour the campus or experience something, um, even if it's on like a voluntary basis in advance. I just know that's a really valuable experience to, it's a large campus and there's a lot going on, so it's a really nice opportunity.
Okay, so noted. Let's take a vote. Um, Susan?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
And Helen?
Yes, and I want to thank the staff for putting together two years of, of calendars. I think its parents will be very grateful. And staff probably too.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that.
And so with that, so with that comment uh, that Helen just shared, what we'll plan to do then is bring uh, the subsequent calendar to you all probably around the same time so that we'll always keep two uh, in the hopper.
Thank you. Um, David, are you going to talk about a possible vote uh, for the committee on uh, the change in wording?
I am, yes. So this past Monday at the policy subcommittee meeting, we discussed uh, formally changing any references to headmaster and housemaster in our policies to head of school. Now, on an informal basis, we have already been doing this for quite a few years. But in our official policies, some of these terms remain. And obviously, they have a disturbing antebellum connotation that we no longer want to be associated with. Uh, and so we are moving in the direction as a subcommittee of committing ourselves, sort of eliminating all of those aforementioned references and substituting head of school. Head of school is a term that is very common in uh, peer districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to refer to high school principals. We did have some discussion about whether we should be changing the name to uh, principal or head of school. But it was recommended to us uh, by district leadership that we go with the head of school term. The reason why this is just a commitment towards eliminating the references to headmaster and housemaster as opposed to uh, actually voting changes in specific policies is because these antiquated terms fall into numerous policies. And so we need to go through each one more carefully and then in a rather mechanistic, mechanistic manner, go through each one and vote changes separately. But for now, we at least want full committee support in the commitment to eliminating references to headmaster and housemaster. So I would like to move that we make that commitment as a full committee.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, questions, comments, thoughts?
I had.
Helen?
So a question on housemaster, I think we've changed that to deans a while ago, isn't it?
In some places, yes, but it still pops up in, in occasional policy. So the house master role is now the equivalent of the dean role.
Right, okay, that's what I thought, yeah. So in it, but I think we've already heard of them as deans for the last ten years. Okay.
Any other thoughts or comments? I will say, I think it's peculiar to Massachusetts or New England to have even head of school. Seems like most places have principals. That's what I always knew even at high school. I think maybe it has to do with old traditions around prep schools maybe, or schools coming from England. Or I don't know what it is, but that seems, it seems peculiar to, to uh, New England or, or Commonwealth. I don't know.
I think part of the reason is that high schools also tend to have multiple buildings. So sometimes when it's a broader campus, you really want to be referring to the person who's in charge of all of the buildings on that campus. Head of school might be clearer than principal. And we have that even uh, here at times where we have the ninth grade campus, but it's still one person who is the official head of the school.
Sure.
Suzanne, it's the same as the high school uh, letterhead that used to, I don't know if it still does, but used to say the high school. That was what, it wasn't even like the country club, the high school.
Okay, I see, no other hands, let's, let's take a vote on this. Um, here we go, let's kind of start in the middle. Andy?
Sorry, I wasn't expecting to be called on first, yes.
Sometimes I just mix it up, you know, so people have a chance. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Uh, Mariah?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you for that work and the work you're going to do. Um, we have moved into subcommittees and liaison reports. So who has something that they would like to uh, report out? Jennifer?
Uh, I just wanted to invite folks to the next curriculum subcommittee meeting on Tuesday, December twenty-first at four o'clock. We'll be having um, discussion, or sorry, presentation from the science curriculum coordinator. Um, and we'll also be talking about um, maybe, Leslie, you can remind me, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired, the title of our social studies um, agenda item, because I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, um, it's a curriculum, um, a curriculum review and review of culturally responsive teaching practices in social studies K to twelve.
Specific, I think, to the materials, right?
Specific to the materials at the high school. And when we're talking about K to eight, we're also looking at culturally responsive practices. And this work was funded through the Metco program.
So two really exciting topics. I invite folks to join us for that. If you cannot join us, it'll be recorded, so you can always check it out later.
Val, did you have a question about that?
I did. Um, will, will this include a discussion of the recently passed um, bill on genocide? Or is that, will that be a separate conversation on teaching genocide?
I think that might be a separate conversation, Val, um, but certainly we hope that we have a um, a consultant that is knowledgeable and has engaged in this work before. Um, so I expect that any material related to that, that's currently in our curriculum will be reviewed and will have um, some findings, whether they're um, commendations or recommendations for next steps.
Great, thank you. Uh, Helen and then Andy?
Um, so capital has been very busy, uh, very busy. Number of projects are moving along, some are almost standing. I don't know if Susan and Val want to give updates on the two projects. Actually, I'm going to steal your thunder, Val. The one good, if you don't, but for one thing, the rest you can talk about.
You're, you're doing the one good thing. Go ahead.
The four point five million for the geothermal was approved by the Department of Revenue to be part of the actual debt exclusion. Uh, so they up the amount that we can then borrow for the project, which is fantastic news. That was the only thing I wanted to say, Val, you can say the rest.
Oh, no, I just, I mean, that means we don't have to go back to the voters, right? So which is a, a great, which is great news. The rest is, is fairly straightforward, on time, on budget um, right now. So that's uh, we'll be meeting in January, we're, we're, excuse me, we're going to be meeting quarterly going forward.
That's a pretty big hole in the ground right now.
It's a very big hole in the ground.
Yeah, it's impressive, yeah.
Yeah, at the building commission, they were talking about the elevator base being put in. And um, I'm trying to think if there was anything else that came up at the building commission. I think that was about it. And that they're, they're moving ahead and the good weather has been very good to them.
Helen, anything else on capital?
Well, Susan, do you want to say something about?
Um, so the high school is having a tremendous burst of activity. They are going to be running full speed ahead across the finish line. Um, everyone is laser focused on getting Brington path open behind the high school, reopening the MBTA station and um, uh, getting the kids in on time for the beginning of the second term. Uh, so the certificate, the certificate of occupancy, the temporary CVO is still slated for um, early January, um, which gives them time to do what, what isn't a punchless, there's still a lot of work to do. But, but um, all the life safety systems will get signed off on so the kids can get in there. I will say that the campus, there's a lot going on at campus right now. And parking is, or we're hearing about parking being complicated. We're hearing about just logistics back and forth being hard. So like, everybody um, is trying to give you each other as much grace as possible, but, but mindful that um, that it's a really tough time to get all those pieces in place um, at the start of, um, by the start of second term. But that's the plan, that's where they're headed. And um, sort of, it's very exciting. There's also work happening, which is less, um, you know, top of people's minds on the quad and on the third floor and those kinds of things. Uh, but I think the main, the main topic of conversation really is twenty-two Tappan and um, getting the Tappan Gym opened up in the field. So happy to answer questions if anyone has them, but that's kind of where, where it's heading.
And also the Tappan Street Gym has had quite a bit of work to it. The locker rooms look fantastic compared to what they used to look like.
The only other update is that since, um, you know, Ray Masak, who's been such an incredible asset to the schools and to the generations of children in Brookline who, who don't even know who he is, um, is stepping back um, at the beginning of next year. Um, as is Ken Kaplan, um, who has been on the building commission since longer than most people have lived in Brookline. Um, I think there probably would be, it'd be nice if we could kind of think of some way to, as a, as a school committee, recognize them or say something um, to, to the two of them.
I agree with you, Susan. That's, you're absolutely right on that. And I was actually thinking about that too. Um, the Pierce School Project is moving forward. Uh, we voted the um, the preferred schematic uh, report that will be sent to the. the preferred schematic report that will be sent to the MSBA within the next week or so. And will be voted on by them in March. We will be continuing, since we've gotten feedback from them all along, we're going to be continuing with the design process in January, talking about a number of issues around the school, including, you know, the design of the school and sustainability and school street issues in terms of safety for students crossing to the park. And the goal is to have a what's it called? Now I'm blocking on the name. Anyways, to have the, the final okay and, and agreement with the MSBA, I think it would be in August, in August, so that sometime in the fall, we would be able to have an override vote for the school.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be meeting again in January. Our meeting in January, we're determined to go to visit two school, uh, no, two, two pieces. We discussed at, in, at length, the CIP and the repair and maintenance budget and you know, using a new spreadsheet, actually, that Mariah was great in putting together, so that we can start to prioritize items. But we felt that it would be important to go visit two schools and see the issues. So we, and the two schools we decided to visit were the, the two that have been the longest since the renovation. One being the Baker and the other being the New Lincoln School, which now is not as new. It's 30 years old almost. So we would be visiting both those schools on, at our next meeting, which is in January, second Tuesday of the month, to tour them and see the issues that, that have been highlighted in the repair and maintenance budget.
Thank you.
That's it.
Andy?
Thanks. Second update negotiations. And so I, as I mentioned at the last school committee meeting, the school committee had petitioned the Department of Labor Relations for mediation. Because our salary offer and the BEU salary request have not been getting closer. The DLR got back to us earlier this week. They've taken jurisdiction over the process. And as part of that process, before they assigned a mediator, they directed the parties to meet again and report back to them by January 21st. So that will be our next step, and we'll continue to keep the school committee and the public updated.
Thank you, Andy. Mariah?
Um, we had a finance subcommittee meeting yesterday at which we discussed several different topics, including, and I just want to call a couple of them out. The, it was about $350,000 in grants that were new programs that Sam and Feng from IT had identified and applied for. So that was pretty great. And we talked about some of the things we talked about today, the select board, CIP and operating budget, as came up a little bit earlier today. And ongoing conversations about the building departments, budget requests for the schools. That was at Capital, too, continued at Finance, and I think will continue to continue as a discussion. And, and then looked at some of the, the budget top or bottom line numbers, I'll say, as well that Sam had presented. And we also discussed earlier tonight. And then the other thing I want to talk about is just reporting out the accounts payable warrants that I've been reviewing since we last met, which was two weeks ago. I've reviewed two more totaling And that process continues to be, I think, more and more streamlined. It's going well, and I think it's a valuable process.
Thank you, Mariah. All right, David, do you want to report out?
Yes. So the policy subcommittee met on Monday, the 13th. In addition to discussing the name change to head of school, we also discussed a policy on restraint use, which we are mainly updating in order to make sure that we're in compliance with current DUC standards as well as state law. The federal government is also moving in a direction of providing additional safeguards for our students in that realm. We also discussed a draft pesticides policy. We also had an introductory discussion on crafting a potential policy for school ground surfaces, whether that be synthetic turf, natural grass, et cetera. And we'll be meeting again early next month. Oh, and one other item we discussed was a potential name change for the Heath School. So Principal Dr. Sevilleus of the currently named Heath School came on and talked about the concerns that some of the members of the Heath community have with being named at, having their building named after a school that is named after Heath Street, which was named after the Heath family, which owns slaves. And Dr. Sevilleus issued a letter recently explaining that history to the Heath community. And we expect to receive some feedback on that in the coming weeks, and we'll report further on that next month.
Thank you, David. Does anyone else have anything to report? Okay, see none. We'll move on. Is there any new business that someone wants to bring up? Helen, your hand is up. Is that from before or? That's okay. I just need to know. That's okay.
I'm sorry, I'm on an iPad and you can't see that it's up. I apologize.
No, that's okay. We are going to move into executive session. So I have motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A, for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brookline Educators Union, BEU, units A and unit B, and to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the following meeting, November 22nd, 2021. Do I have a second to the motion? Thank you, Andy. We'll vote on that. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So you need to go into the executive session. That link, and we will not be returning to open session when we are done. So we will see you on the other side. And thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.